The time is now four P M and I am calling to order the City of Lauderdale Hill City Commission Workshop. Today is Monday, October twentieth, twenty twenty five. City Clerk, please call the road.
Commissioner Campbell? Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Hodgson?
Present.
Vice Mayor Martin? Mayor Grant?
Present.
City Attorney Ottnott? City Manager Hobbs. Roll call completed.
Thank you so much. And so this is a workshop and so we have a limited agenda. And the items on the agenda will be the only items that we will be discussing today. And so we will begin. At this time, we're going to go to item number one, which is a, which is a micro transportation. Presentation, and I believe the gentleman is here to present. City Manager.
Yes, as, as he comes up, you can come up, up to the mic. So over the last year, so we've been having some communications. With. A company, I guess you would say, Circuit. On the possibility of providing additional alternatives for our residents as relates to transportation. Currently, we have the Community Bus Shuttle Bus, Bus Shuttle? Shuttle Bus? Bus Shuttle. That, that provides opportunities to our residents and based on the statistics from the county. We have one of the busiest routes in the entire county. So again, this is an, an additional alternative. That would be able to provide some more point-to-point alternatives for our residents. This, and again, during the presentation, and there are some things that we will work out, but if there's a consensus for us to move forward, we can continue having discussions. And there are opportunities where some of the trips will be free, similar to the community shuttle, and then there is a small fee. That we're able to charge for other point-to-point on-demand type trips. So again, we'll, I'll turn the floor over. For the presentation and following, if there are any questions that the commission may have, we'll be available to answer those. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for having me today. Jason Bagley with Circuit. We are a, a national micro transit provider based here in Broward County. Been operating in Fort Lauderdale since two thousand eleven. And I've been speaking with the city manager, city staff, and some elected officials here for several years. So excited to have the opportunity to come and speak with you all today. Is there a remote to? Okay.
Let's say next slide.
Next slide. Okay, there we go. So Circuit is on-demand E V micro transit. We are connecting communities. Reimagining mobility with tech-enabled shared E V solutions. Next slide, please. And we offer a full turnkey solution. So that means we have W two local drivers that we hire in the communities that we serve. We provide vehicles, maintenance, insurance. We have a full technology suite, so collecting the data from the rides you request, similar to an Uber. We also have a call center that we can put in place if it's seniors and people think that they won't use an app, but we, we can have. A call center option, although we've dispelled a lot of those concerns. City of Pompano Beach, we, our average age is over sixty-four. We're moving about ten thousand people a month in Pompano with just three vehicles. But again, full turnkey solution, we come in and provide it all. We work with the city. Do some outreach to the neighborhoods, the business community, and get the word out to, to, to let everybody know that the, the offering's available. Next slide, please. And we are nationally recognized. So although we're based here in South Florida, we are in the Northeast. We have large operations in New York. New Jersey, Massachusetts, D C. We're all over Florida, up to Orlando, Texas, Southern California, and Pacific Northwest. Next slide, please. Some of the logo, logos of the cities and CRAs that we serve here in South Florida, so heavy between West Palm Beach and Hollywood. A lot of these markets we've been in since two thousand eleven, two thousand fifteen, moving a ton of people in Fort Lauderdale. Our oldest market, we're moving about twenty thousand people a month there. And something that's relevant to you all as we started a new location, the Fort Lauderdale Northwest. Service kicked off in February. It's only two vehicles. It's all west of ninety-five, so areas that did not have a lot of mobility options. We're moving about twenty-four hundred people a month. In that area, it also can connect to our base Fort Lauderdale service area to get them to the beach Los Olas and the general business district. Next slide, please. So one solution, many use cases for the City of Lauderdale Hill would be looking at community mobility. First-last mile connections are a big one for us, too. We like to connect people to, I know you have the Lauderdale Transit Center. We connect to Tri-Rail, to Bright Line, to other mass transit options. So getting people from their home to the bus routes, to the train routes. When it's hundred degrees out in the summer or raining, you don't want to be standing at a bus stop all the time, so we, we make those connections easy. We do want to complement, not replace the community shuttles. We know they're very effective. Next slide, please. And it, we have mixed fleet opportunities, so the top left are kind of our legacy vehicles, the neighborhood electric. Golf cart style vehicles, which are good for a beach or downtown setting. The sedans, S U Vs, and vans are more appropriate for a city like Lauderdale. That Volkswagen I D Buzz is something that we're transitioning a lot of our fleet to, six-seats, automatic sliding doors on both sides. And then bottom right is an all-electric minibus. It's called the, the E Jess. We're running one of those in West Palm Beach today as a pilot. So if that would be of interest, happy to have anybody up to check that out. Next slide, please. And we partner with cities, CRAs, and private developments, so. We're looking to bring in other funding partners. I don't think that this should all live with just the city. The CRAs have been a great funding partner. Private developments such as a hotel or a large employer, we work to get them to participate. And contribute to these programs as they're getting the benefit from it. And then, as the city manager mentioned, we can turn on a small fare. That's all optional. Some of our markets are free, some it's a one or two dollar fare. That's coming useful in a city like Hollywood where we were oversubscribed. The city had a finite number of money. Finite amount of money to spend on the program. And when it was very popular, just a year in, the commission said, what can we do to, to balance out the supply and demand? And we implemented a one-dollar fare. We actually gave more rides the next month. So it's been an effective tool to make sure that people are using it when they need it, but not abusing the system. When it's completely free and, and taking it away from those that need it. Next slide, please.
It's both public and private. It says that, yes?
It's a, we can do public programs, so we'll work with the city. We also have private dedicated services for a hotel or a convention center, but the best. Case is that we're blending those services together, that everyone's paying their fair share, and, and we can allocate resources and vehicles to do different tasks. We're always innovating. We do, as I mentioned, we have that E Jess pilot in West Palm Beach. We also have an autonomous vehicle pilot in West Palm. We're kicking one of those off with the City of Boca Raton as well next month. Next slide, please. We're delivering the best results in the industry. So this is what really matters as you're standing up a program like this, is are people using it? And what's that cost per rider getting down to? We took several of our programs here in South Florida next to our competitors, and you can see the utilization is much higher. And that cost per rider drives down when people are using it. That's a testimony to getting out and getting involved in the community, being, you know, doing some tabling at events. Going to HOAs and, and senior centers and letting people know, this is how you access the service, help them download the app. And help them get acclimated to a new service. Next slide, please. This is a little bit more about some programs getting scrutinized. This specifically is Miami-Dade County. Looking at their Metro Connect program, that costs have run extremely high. There's been no guardrails in place, so. Just really thinking through having something that's publicly defendable. We're totally aware of that. We want to make sure that people are using it, and we are hundred percent incentivized to get the word out. And make this as user-friendly as possible. Next slide, please. Background check, local drivers. Again, W two, some of our competitors are using independent contractors that are tough to control. Tough to put any measures in place. We have all W two local drivers. We work with the cities that we're serving. If there's a workforce development program, we try and hire from within the cities that we're, that we're serving every day. Next slide, please. Our own proprietary tech, so we are tracking all of the information. So all the ride requests that come in, we're gathering that data. We're sharing it with our partners. We have a portal you can log into in real time and see everything, but apart from that, we send out a monthly data report. That you can see how things went for the month of September. How many rides did we do? What was the average wait time? What was the average user age? Heat maps of where the activity is coming to and from, so we can always be gauging what's working well, where we can maybe tweak the program. And maximize the efficiency. Next slide, please. This is just digging in a little bit more granular data, so we have everything by hour of day, by vehicle type. What's the optimal number of vehicles? I won't dig in too much, but I think everybody has access to this document now and can, can dig in. A little tough to see in the audience here, but. We can go to the next slide. There's another one or two of data slides. Again, some heat map activity. Next slide, please. This is the Broward Market Overview. So the big programs that we're running today, City of Hollywood, we've been running since twenty nineteen, moving about ten thousand people a month there. We started a second location, Hollywood West, so it's west of City Hall. Fort Lauderdale, we have a large base service area. We have a Galt Mile service that connects to Lauderdale by the Sea. And we have the Northwest area that we started earlier this year. Pompano Beach just issued a new R F P. We exhausted all of our renewals and just were selected for a new R F P, so that will expand and go further west. Initially, all these services were focused around the beaches and downtowns, but it's more shifted. To the more suburban areas and further west of ninety-five, so it's, it's a trend that is definitely accelerating, and we're seeing a lot more interest. Lauderdale by the Sea. Another market that we turned fares on recently and doing eight to ten thousand riders a month with just a few vehicles. And Wilton Manors, we just renewed our contract there. That's a full citywide service. We're looking now potentially connecting with Oakland Park. Next slide, please. This is just an overview of the impact that we've had in Broward and beyond. Five hundred and sixty-one thousand riders in the last twelve months. Go to the next slide, please. And then we look at what this service could do for the City of Lauderdale Hill. Could go to the next slide, please. So we kind of took a crack at this and some of the discussions that we've had with staff over the, the years. A full citywide service, I think, is, is viable. We anticipated needing about four on-demand vehicles to cover all of it. A lot of the focus would be connecting to the transit center. I think we have eight A M to eight P M as recommended hours that would cover getting commuters to and from work. And then some evening activity. I can go to the next slide, please. And then here's an overlay of the other markets that we have that touch this, and I did not include Wilton Manors, but that would potentially be another bordering service that we have. But today, with this full city boundaries of Lauderdale Hill, it does touch our Fort Lauderdale Northwest. Service area that then touches the Fort Lauderdale base area, which so theoretically could be connecting between all of these markets. And I think there'd be an interest from the City of Fort Lauderdale for Lauderdale Hill to connect to the Tri-Rail Station on Broward Boulevard. Go to the next slide, please. This is an overlay of all of your existing community shuttle routes with the fully on-demand system. So again, we can be able to connect people to those routes and get them first and last mile to their homes or, or a place of work. Next slide, please.
Oh, can you go back to that one, please? Thank you just for a minute. Thank you.
Go to the next slide, please. And one more. So our, our last discussion, we looked at potentially four of the Volkswagen I D Buzz vehicles at ten to twelve hours a day of service. Rough estimate is about six hundred thousand for annual cost. We have been successful in getting F dot grants. There's, there's Innovative Service Development Grant. There's also Transportation Disadvantage Grant. And of course, now Surtax funding is available for programs like this. We have helped a few other cities write letters, and the requirements include a C O I naming the county and the city. A draft agreement, which we have a couple piggybackable contracts. And, and just the requirements, understanding that we know what is expected of these programs, full fourteen ninety compliance, which we already meet. So we're, we're speaking with, I think, four other cities right now about going after some Surtax funding. And next slide, I think that might be, yeah, that's wrapping it up. So happy to answer any questions. And again, thank you all for the time.
Thank you so much. That was a very thorough presentation. I do have some questions, and I'm sure my colleagues as well. But before we do that, I would like to hear a little bit more from the city manager.
Yes. So as stated, we have had communications with Circuit. And over the past year or so, but more specifically in the last six to eight months, as relates to how we can actually implement this program. We've also reached out to the county by way of Scott to ensure, and Daniel, to ensure that these Surtax dollars were qualified. For us to utilize to help offset or fund this activity, and we were told that, that it is, they're available. So we, we know that as a funding.
So what's the process?
The process is, Scott, on this, we would have to submit documentation. I, I guess we would have to get a, a letter from, from Circuit showing that there's an agreement in place, and then submit the documentation to the county in order for them to approve it. So, so we've at least wanted to make sure that it qualified before, so at least we would know we had a funding source for the activities. But again, we saw it as a useful. Vehicle or useful extension to our community shuttle bus service right now, because it's, it's point-to-point, so it actually comes to individuals' home versus them having to go out. And be at certain bus stops and those type things. As you know, we've received some feedback from our residents as it relates to the location of the various bus stops or the shuttle stops. And the crowdedness of those. So we just saw this as an extension of that service, which will allow our residents more opportunities to have transportation to and from. It can be point-to-point, or it can be the designated predetermined location. So again, we, we thought it to be a, a good service, so wanted to make a presentation before the commission received some feedback. Before we go through the exercise of actually trying to design actual routes and those type things.
Okay, good. You actually answered a lot of my questions in your presentation. Nevertheless, in terms of the rollout, rollout cost overall, what does that look like?
Well, if we're talking four vehicles, it is about six hundred thousand per year. Expecting ten to twelve hours a day of service per vehicle. Rollout, we can typically launch in about sixty days from a signed contract. We've been able to do that. We have a ton of infrastructure in place in the immediate area. But, yeah, that's, that's.
About six hundred thousand for the year.
For four vehicles, and it could start smaller than that. I think one of the big benefits of our programs is that we can start small and scale up. As you see, the demand is there. It doesn't have to start citywide. It can start with just seniors. It can start with, as the city manager mentioned, it can be.
Okay.
Fixed destination, so.
And so with the Surtax, Kenny, will it co, cover a majority of that expense, or how does that work? From other cities, how this, yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm not necessarily, I guess he can speak to how, how they've prepared in other cities, but again, our goal would be for the majority. Of the cost to be covered by our Surtax dollars as well as opportunity grants through Broward County. So again, we, we do, we, we have received increased dollars as it relates to Surtax and there are additional dollars. That, that they've identified, and they've actually identified the micro circuit vehicles as qualifying just this past year. As well, so they've sent out notifications for that, which also ramped up our conversations with, with the firm to see if it would be possible to implement. Or introduce this service to our residents. But again, our goal would be to receive as much funding as possible from the Surtax dollars and/or grants in order.
And the remaining amount, would, would anything come from the C R A or general funds?
Well, again, depending on how the, ultimately, yes. Ultimately, we would have to, whatever the shortfall is, we would have to fund that. With some type of general fund, C R A funding in order to make it happen. But again, I, I think our goal is primarily to identify those Surtax dollars to actually fund the activity.
Okay. You did say, so some of the rides are free and others you would have, the residents would have to pay for.
That's totally up to you.
So again, that's part of the.
So we would have to figure out how we're going to make that assessment.
Correct. So when, when looking at. Correct. So when when looking at funding, again, the reason I asked if it was possible that there could be a small fee because that additional revenue offsets the cost. So when looking at what that shortfall number is, again, that that kind of goes into if there would be a fee. And again, if it's if it's point-to-point, then it may make sense to have a small fee for a point-to-point versus if it's a fixed route. So again, that that's something that we would work through depending on the what of the commission.
Okay, so the service that we have right now, we won't be duplicating efforts because this is a little bit different. You're going directly to the person's home, so they have an app that they would put the information in and you would pick them up, right? Okay, so I am hoping that that would not be chaotic for you.
It's not a, we do it in all of our markets. Almost every market we're in, there's community shuttles and we try and complement and work together. And you know, there's some modifications that can happen to our service very easily. I know Hollywood, for example, is looking to modify some of their fixed route. So it fits everybody better and it and it's easier. But there hasn't been confusion. I'd say in most cases, people prefer the on-demand. We are not trying to pull away from that, but we do want to get people to those longer-range bus routes or fixed routes.
Okay, just a couple more questions.
Sure.
As it relates to the infrastructure that you will put in place to ensure that residents or Lauderdale Hill people are get the opportunities to get jobs with your company. Talk to me a little bit more about how you will tailor that.
Yeah, I mean, we are, we prioritize that. So in our postings, which will be on our website and we use Indeed, we prefer hiring local. It's shorter commute time. It's people that know the area. And we would work with the city if there's a workforce organization within city, you know, within the city. We absolutely prioritize that and always work with any of those that exist.
Okay, okay, good. And then in terms of our, this is really for you, city manager. In terms of our overall transportation plan, you will say that this aligns with what we're trying to accomplish.
Yes, we we believe it increases accessibility for our residents, understanding some of the challenges that they may encounter in order, whether it's to get getting to work, getting to school. Again, right now, we have the public transportation. We also have our community shuttle service, which have fixed stops. This and through our conversation, may you can still have some fixed stop locations as it relates to Circuit as well, where you can identify specific locations and and then be able to transport them to, as he stated, the more long-term, maybe to the bus terminal or to some of the other connectors throughout the city. So we see this as enhancing our current community shuttle, which is on a fixed route. So they can only go to certain locations based on that fixed route. But this allows them to to not be, I guess you'd say, caught in the circle of the fixed route, but actually.
Be good for the seniors and those that are disabled.
Right, doctor's appointments, grocery stores, those type things.
Got it. All right. And my last question is in terms of your point of contact as you're communicating with the city, what department then will you be directly communicating with or what discipline?
That's different in every market. Sometimes it's Public Works, if there's transportation strategic strategic communication. So we would look for your direction of who you'd want us to be.
At this time, we usually, it's usually parks, right? Okay, so we'll continue that way?
Yes.
Okay, got it. All right. Thank you kindly. Appreciate the presentation. Commissioner Dunn.
I I've heard really good things about your company from my colleagues in some of the cities that you've mentioned. So I'm satisfied that you deliver quality service. I do have some questions though that need clarified and Kenny, perhaps you can help me to clarify. So there are a couple of success measures. There we go. There are a couple of success measures that you mentioned during your presentation, specifically cost utilization and and wait time, right? So Kenny, could you help me to understand what the KPIs are for the current shuttle in terms of utilization, wait time and cost?
So we can get you that information. I know Scott has that as it relates. So because there's a fixed, I guess you'd say a fixed route, then they have fixed stops at certain times. We can get you utilization, but I can tell you just.
Totally. What what you've seen in your years of doing this work?
Scott, what, on average, how many passengers are we seeing on the current community shuttle on an annual basis?
Forty-seven thousand people, right? Right, forty-seven thousand. Okay, gotcha.
All seven routes go from like 6:30 to 6:30. And majority of the routes are trying to tie them into either another bus stop, the Publix on Oakland, or obviously the mall where they can grab bigger transportation. Those are the key and they all go through all the sections. So there's a St. George Route, a West Kenlark Route, Central Routes and West Routes. And I can get you each.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see that.
We do leave the county and we do put a monthly report around and I off the top of my head, it's somewhere around 47,000 rides.
Thank you. If you would share that data, that would be really interesting. And so the current schedule I'm I'm hearing is six to six, but the proposed schedule will be from eight to eight.
We, again, that's all flexible. I think there's some benefit going later if if the services end, the fixed route service ends at 8:30. I'm sure there's needs after that and we see that in a lot of our markets that will continue on till eight or nine at night. But we can also stagger the schedule to have one or two vehicles start at 6:30 to line up with that, you know, with the fixed route service. And then stagger it so that we can continue longer hours of of service throughout the day, but spread out. So it's not all four vehicles at all times.
Okay, and Kenny, what's the cost currently to us and to residents to operate the shuttle?
It's free.
It's free.
So it's free to, it's free to the residents. So there's a cost to us, which is covered right now by some of the the Surtax dollars from the county. So it's free to our residents. At one point, we did consider a fee at one point several years ago, but we did not implement that. So to our residents, it's free.
Okay, all right. And then I I hear you say that the Surtax, I mean, based on what I knew about it, this would fall under.
It is available now, yes, for for microtransit, yep.
All right, fantastic. So we are currently in the process of doing a transportation master plan, right?
Yes.
Do we, what is your recommendation to wait until we have that master plan complete before rolling this out? Or are you thinking to move quicker?
We're actually looking to move them at the same time. So again, we thought that it'd be important at least come and have a consensus of the commission for us to move forward. And at that same time, we can work with the vendor to see as far as routing, there are approvals that have to take place at at the commission level, city commission as as well as the county level. Also, understanding that'll take several months for us to accomplish. We felt that important to come now so that we can at least start this process. And even if we phase it and roll it out in phases, we felt it important to start it now versus waiting until the master plan is completed.
Okay, and then you would wait until we get confirmation that we we are awarded the Surtax dollars before moving forward with a contract?
Correct.
Okay, and then from a procurement standpoint, do we have to go through any sort of process around RFP? Like, talk to me a little bit about that.
So and that was part of our conversation. They've already gone through some RFP processes. So we have the ability to piggyback existing contracts as it relates to some of the some of the agreements that they currently have in place. So we will actually review those to see if they're consistent or at least in line with what we're proposing to do. If they are, then we can look at it from that avenue. If not, then we can go out and do our own RFP process.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Commissioner Dunn. Commissioner Campbell.
Mr. City Manager, the presentation that you made, I wasn't clear. Is did we do a study to look at the existing system? And the study indicate that there is a need?
Yes, so the existing system, we we have studied for the last several years so much that Broward County, because of our ridership, actually extended or added an additional route to our and to our existing six. So now we have seven as stated by Scott. But one of the things, we have seven routes. So we had six routes, but based on ridership, because of the heavy ridership, they added an additional route. So when we looked at the study, one of the things we considered doing, well, was the fee. It's the fact that they have to make it to a bus stop in order to participate in the current program. But this on the Commercial Boulevard corridor for our community shuttle, this will actually be able to transfer you from your door to one of those community shuttle stops or to the mall where the where the transfer station is for our, for the larger bus system. So based on that information, why, again, again, this is something that we've looked at for about a year or two now. But we're at the point now where the funding mechanism is in place for us to be able to move forward. But there is a need for our seniors specifically and our working class. One of the things that we realized just by looking at our community shuttle, that there's a need for transportation, additional transportation modes within our city. So this again allows our residents from point-to-point, from their front door, to connect them with the existing public transportation that we have.
So the present system that is in place could not have provided?
Not not the point-to-point. So so many years ago, many years ago, we had our own point-to-point within the city and it was very costly because we had through it was through the transportation, through the Parks and Recreation Department where we owned our own vehicles. We had our own staff. Well, it became costly to maintain purchasing and maintaining those vehicles as well as staffing, having staffing issues. So we went away from it. So this gives us a mechanism where they have a system that's currently in place that's operating where if they have issues with vehicles, it becomes their issue, not our issue. If they have issues with staffing, it becomes their issue, not our issue. While the benefits of the service are being afforded to our residents. So it's something that we can do. The current system doesn't allow it. It doesn't allow it to expand to the point that we're speaking of. But there there is an, there is a, I guess you'd say, an opportunity for us to do it ourselves. But we just saw that to be more costly than being able to work with a third.
To the existing route, when I can just have point-to-point?
Cost, so if.
What do you mean, cost?
Cost. So right now, the, for example, if I wanted to go to the Lauderdale Hill Mall and say I live in Embarry and there isn't an existing bus stop within walking distance. Depending on how it's structured, it may be free or it may be a minimal cost. So it may cost me a dollar to get from my house to the to the route. And then the bus, the community shuttle will take me to the mall and back. So right now, I would have to call a taxi. I would have to call an Uber. This is a lot less expensive than an Uber system or even a taxi cab. So from a cost perspective, it's more convenient than having to walk if it's, whether it's bad weather in order to get to the existing shuttle bus point, if it exists nearby. And then the cost of having to employ, whether it's a, and and I'm assuming this is for individuals who either or they're choosing not to utilize their vehicles, because some people have vehicles and just, you know, choose not to utilize them. But from a cost and convenience standpoint, it's the it's the reason I would say our residents would use.
Would use what?
His service, the circuits, the microservice.
Okay, the the concern I have there is you have two possible system working together.
Yes.
Why would I use the old system when?
And I think part of the the fee structure will accomplish that. And I think part of the the fee structure will accomplish that. The current system is free. So assuming that there is a a fee structure for the point-to-point, there's a cost, which is less than if you were to use a taxi or an Uber, it still provide benefits to our residents. I agree. Excuse me?
Persons are accustomed to using the old system, so they will, those persons that are used to that and understand that system will continue to do that.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I I understand that.
Those individuals.
What I would be concerned that what has been working or whenever.
It has been.
The new system does not impact it.
Yeah, that's a great question and we get it all the time and I I don't disagree with you.
But in our case, we have, and and as Kenny mentioned, that they have been doing this study for some years. But even recently, we have gotten a slew of emails and complaints as it relates to.
Community shuttle.
The community shuttle. And it makes sense because the servant, of course, everyone, there's a lot of, you know, persons in the city of Lauderdale Hill. I think we've done some study before to show that a large percentage of individuals here don't drive. So we understand that. So I think this would complement what we have. It's not to take away from the community shuttle, but it's to add value and to be able to better serve our residents based on the need. So I don't see that the community shuttle will then be underutilized. I think it will still be utilized, but this is more designed to to assist. I I personally look at it and say, the seniors are going to benefit a lot from this, right? In addition to that, those who have disabilities that may not be able to walk to the bus station or a certain location, but it comes directly to them. So it it's more tailored for for that and we have a large population that will benefit from it.
Yeah, I I'm with that, but I'm concerned about seeing the existing transportation have only one person that they have to take around. And therefore, we may end up not having that system because it's not. That's why the first question was if the existing system could complement what they're doing now and provide that aspect of it as a, economically, if the existing system is run out of business because they dealt with more mass as opposed to individual, then I would have a concern because the 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 system needs both. But we would not want the whole system to die.
A hundred percent. I I totally get it. We've been running side-by-side with these community shuttles for over a decade and it's, a lot of it is finding that balance that sets up who's going to use a $2 trip. Sorry?
What what's a possible fear we're talking about?
$2 a person? It's it's small. That's typically what we're at, one or $2 a rider. But that number will affect the one that was on that list. Pompano, Hollywood, Fort Lauderdale, Lauderdale by the Sea, Lauderdale by the Sea does not anymore and Wilton Manners has some, and Wilton Manners has some community shuttles running.
It's, that includes Tamarack?
No, Tamarack doesn't have microtransit today, but I've been speaking with them. They do not have microtransit.
No, I'm not picking on Tamarack. And and part of it.
But there's also.
I know that Tamarack has a huge elderly immunity.
Yes.
That's why I'm using them as a test case.
It is a good fit there and we've been, we've been engaged. But it's also a finite number.
I'm not sending you to Tamarack, no.
I understand.
Okay.
Okay, I think we've we've concluded this presentation. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead. Just one more question. Oh, so you guys decided to press the button at the very end?
Actually, I had a few questions, but they all have been answered. This and the commissioners' questions. Just one clarification here. First of all, that was a very good presentation, a service that is well-needed. I just want to get a clarification in terms of the operation hours. 8:00 AM until 8:00 PM, does that include the weekends?
What? I'm sorry, can you repeat?
Operation hours.
Does that include weekends?
Yes, I think I put on there Saturdays, but everything is flexible. We can build it however you want to do it. Some of our markets are closed on Sundays if you need more hours during the week, but all very flexible and we can. This is really starting from scratch. You kind of mold this program how you want it and we can easily modify it. If the data is showing that nobody's using a special event going on and we want all resources to do that for a weekend, we can, we can do that and notify everybody. When you open up the app, it will have a pop-up that says this weekend, there's a large event. All rides will be going only to and from this park.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yeah, so Kenny, I know you're looking for a consensus based on the answers to the question and the fact that I know how this operates in other cities around the county. I'd be supporting moving forward. So you have my consensus. My thought, though, is as you roll it out, that you kind of really do look at that data again and and see where there are opportunities to use this as a a way to correct some of the shortfalls that we've had in the current system. And my my second thought is that we look at best practices for those cities that have both programs to see that this is really, in fact, an enhancement and not a subtraction. And then thirdly, of course, with the understanding that we have it 100% funded through the Surtax. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Anything else from you, sir? Okay. I love to hear from our residents all the time. And I know that the city attorney always says, just take up too much time, but I think it's important. So I am going to open this up to the public and if I can have one or two persons to add, yeah, thank you.
Good evening, um, Ms. Cooper, representing the West Kenlock Homeowners Association, fifteen forty-one Northwest Thirty Second Avenue. I, I'm, I, I don't think that, um, now, I think when you apply for the service, uh, do you pay online? Because many, uh, especially me, I'm not that tech savvy. The other question is does, will they take you to the airport? If you need the egg? So those are my two concerns.
Very good, thank you so much, Ms. Cooper. Yeah.
That's expensive.
The airport is, yeah, the Uber is expensive, yeah, can be.
Uh, yeah, so payment is through the app. You set up, uh, an account just like you would on Uber and request your ride, but your payment, your wallet is in there to pay for it.
Okay.
Uh, we do promo codes, we can do seniors free, we can set it up however you want, all different, um, structures. Typically when we roll out a new market, we'll do free for the first thirty to ninety days to let people get acclimated. We would do a ton of outreach, go to the HOAs, go to the community centers and help people download the app, get all their information in there. Uh, we do not go to the airport, unfortunately.
Oh, you do not, so maybe you need to add that on.
We could, we can look at.
You can consider that, see Ms. Cooper? Yeah, working on your behalf. Yeah, I think that's a consideration, yes, that was a very good question as well. Um, I would have some concerns, those city managers relates to the app for our seniors. And even if we go to the homeowners association meetings, you're not going to capture a large amount. So we will have to figure that out.
We, like I said, we can do a call center as well and you can pay onboard, we have a top to pay, you can scan a QR code. So there's other ways of doing it as well, but we have not.
We would have to explore it for sure.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Based on my experience with, uh, ride share, freebie and, and, uh, generally seniors are provided free rides without cost if cities are able to find the funding. So from my experience, I have seen that, so.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you, we have work to do, thank you so much, appreciate that. Okay, so we are now going to, no one else in the public, right? Okay, so we're going to item number two, it's a discussion of the For Life Golf Program, the field and the staffing. Um, so thank you so much. So of course we, we submit these things probably a week and a half before we come before you. And during that time, we could meet with our city manager and other disciplines and get the information that we need, but I still think that it's imperative to talk about it. So I know that Chief, we recently had a meeting talking about the golf program. I've gained some more knowledge knowing that this year there's about a hundred children that are in that program, um, Scott. And, um, and so it is a thriving program, but there's some challenges along the way as it relates to just the field in itself, right? So we just had some conversations around that and I'm comfortable with what I heard in terms of, um, looking at some options. Uh, how we're going to go about this with the golf course on Sixteenth Street. Um, so there's some work that needs to be done in order for us, us as leaders in the city as well as, um, employees to be comfortable with what the kids are playing on. So if you should just give me a synopsis and then I can just close this out.
Sure, so, um, we have the For Life Golf Program at the Lauderdale Golf Course that's overseen by LPGA Tour guy Paula Tucker, who's a golf pro. Uh, the kids meet Tuesday and Thursdays and Saturdays. And so we have about a hundred kids in the program. Um, if you're in that program and you play in the county in high school, that high school is winning golf tournaments. The kids do life skills and it's a very valuable program, we've run that program for about twenty years. So over the course of taking care of the golf course, while I've been with the city, uh, the city's taken care of it at times, we've had a contractor take care of it at times. And then we retook it back over, uh, as at the end of the last contract, the contractor wasn't taking care of the course up to the standards we wanted. So Public Works has taken that over with the maintenance crew. And so the course looks much better, uh, the greens, you know, of all the essential things on a golf course, the greens are the most important. And so they're in such a condition that we're trying to get them back, but you know, Public Works inherited what the condition they were in from the contractor, so.
Right.
If we get the greens looking good and there's suggestions on how to do that, um, the course will be in good shape.
Great, thank you so much. Chief, you mentioned to me that it's about fifteen acres there, um, and there are nine greens, is that what it's called?
Yes.
Nine greens?
Executive course, it's not.
Nine courts, okay, so you mentioned that it would probably be roughly about maybe, what did you say, something around two hundred and fifty thousand in order to get it up to a certain level? Was that the number?
Yeah, that's a number, I, I just wanted to give you just a couple of things that we've done in the last thirty days, if I could.
Yes.
Um, since we've taken over from the contractor that was there, we've been working with, you know, the Parks Department and what we've done is we actually threw Paula and our, uh, person that's working over there, Ryan, they reached out to the USGA, so we got them to come in and do a survey for free. Uh, and they did a full analysis of the course and they provided us a full report. So we kind of use that as the prescription of what we need to do going forward. They identified several things, quickly we went into and did a full tree survey. There's some plants there and some trees that need to be removed. Uh, we did an irrigation survey, we restored the irrigation. And as of ten one this budget, we now have three full-time employees that work at the, the golf course. So what we're seeing is just in the thirty days, our personnel there being responsive because they're cutting the grass every day. So yes, the greens, uh, are in, in bad condition, they need to be replaced. So with that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's estimated there's nine greens and there are different square footages. But that also not does, includes replacement of the grass, but enhance the irrigation around the greens. Because if we're going to invest, we need to maintain them. Right now the irrigation there works, but it's not a commercial grade. You know, high volume irrigation, so, um, you know, there's a, there's a litany of things that can go on, but our presence being there every day has kind of helped. We are working with the manager to try identify funds for perimeter security fence along the north wall, as you saw today. We have, you know, folks walking through the golf course with their kids from school. So that's really the, kind of the things we've done in the last thirty days is kind of, you know, just kind of get up to speed.
Yes.
And we're going to look for a head greenskeeper part-time that we can, can guide us through the repairs that we'll try to do in-house.
And, and talk to me a little bit more about the trees as well.
Florida, some are not, they have some that are identified as already compromised, which we are going to take those down in-house, we don't want anything falling. Uh, there's a lot of coconut trees there that require a lot of maintenance, you know, when they start to fall, where that's a problem, so. Uh, we're, we're just looking at all those things and we have a, uh, superintendent in-house that's a, you know, arborist and a, um, you know, tree person and he's identified those. Again, we, we might've got a little ahead of ourselves, we started taking some trees down that we, we knew that were problematic, but the golfers liked them, so we're working with the, we're, we're, you know, we're working with Paula and, and them. And we walked the course just the other day with Paula, just to get, to understand, you know, this is nothing, you know, we're not here to do any harm. We're here to just restore what we can within our means and I think that's really the point.
Okay, great, and one of the things that I was impressed by as well is the fact that, um, number one, it's much larger property than I had imagined when I drove through today with you guys. But in addition to that, um, you, the security measures that you guys talked about in, in terms of putting up, because what I found out is that children are walking across the golf course, right? And then somehow, the, tell me the issues that, that come about with that.
You know, obviously the injury potential, uh, we do have golfers every day, there's a, there's a passion for that golf course. You know, there's a core group of people that have been playing there, whether the passion is because it's only ten dollars or not, they, and they feel like it's theirs. Um, and they are Lauderdale residents and there are some seasonal residents, but obviously we do have a presence there every day and we try to stop the folks. But the adults are taking their children through the golf course to get to the apartment complex.
Apartment complex.
So as much as we can try to reroute them and we try to reroute them, but if we secure that area along that north perimeter, then hopefully we can avoid anyone from getting injured.
Got it, all right, thank you very much, do appreciate it, thank you. Commissioner Dunn, go ahead. Thank you, so I love the program and, um, I know that we have really turned out some amazing youth, um, youth athletes as a result. Um, the, the cost to fix or up, bring the golf course up to par, is that something that's already in the current budget, Kenny? Or is that something in the proposed, um, bond that you're planning to roll out?
Proposed GL bond for the major renovations, but we do have some dollars in the current capital and operating budgets to start the process, but the major renovations are part of the GL, proposed GL bond.
Okay, I just, um, you know, I know that we're typically fiscally conservative, but I would want us to be extra fiscally conservative considering what's on the pipeline in Tallahassee and the possibility of, of the legislation that may come up that will drastically impact our general budget and what's happening in Washington. So let's just go slow.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. We do appreciate it, thank you so much, Chief, and thank you, Scott. Okay, all right, so we are now on to item number three was removed, item number four, the vice mayor is not here, he has four, four and four A. Is there any supporting documents, city clerk, that was given in his absence? None, okay, and so we don't.
We, we do have a presentation though, staff has presentations.
Okay, so you know what this discussion was going to entail?
Yes.
All right, so are we, we have presentation for four and four A?
Yes.
Okay, great, so let's get to it, thank you.
As, as Daniel comes up, again, we'll start with the, uh, item four and it relates to our artificial turf and ground coverance. So we do have a presentation, uh, that will address, uh, some of the recent changes, uh, in the state statutes as it relates to, uh, artificial turf for use, uh, in residential property, so Daniel, if you will.
Sure, good afternoon. Um, so I'm here to talk to you about artificial turf, there have been some changes in the legislation, there's been some questions that the, that we've received from the public and based off of the current code, we would need some changes to our code if we are going to consider that. Uh, next slide please. So our current regulations, artificial turf is referenced a couple of times throughout the city's code, but not specifically giving a yes or no, just kind of acknowledging the existence of it. Ultimately, um, delegating any sort of approval to the planning and zoning director or, and, and city engineer. Uh, but again, without city staff really having good feedback as to whether or not it is or is not something that we want to pursue. So our policy up until this point, before I came on, has been that we allow a portion of it in the rear. Um, again, with the approval of those two, in those two positions, but, um, where we've been asked to, again, by members of the public to reconsider that or open that up, uh, more. Our code also, at the same time, which would kind of contradict the ability to have artificial turf, uh, references the Florida Green Local Government Design Landscape Man, Maintenance. And that man, manual does not really encourage the use of artificial turf. Uh, it says that it would not be friendly, it's not, it's not a Florida-friendly product. And, um, if I can go to the next slide, please? So the Florida-friendly landscape program does not consider artificial turf to be a Florida-friendly product. Synthetic turf, when compared to natural turf, um, lawn sod, uh, would create a higher temperature around it because it's not absorbing that energy and converting it into oxygen and chloro, and, uh, doing the photosynthesis thing as, as grass does. So healthy lawns, um, are cleaner and cooler for the air and for carbon dioxide. That's what is the current policy and recommendation, but from Florida-friendly landscaping. Next slide. Recently, the state statutes have changed, um, to encourage, well, to not allow local governments to prohibit it outright. And the governor directed the Department of Edg, of Environmental Protections to create some, uh, standards, they had a public workshop and created some draft rules about what, uh, is or is not permitted. Um, certain char, uh, characteristics, if a local government were to allow artificial turf or when and where they allow artificial turf, certain standards about that type of material, color, um, but nothing significant, as it, uh, nothing significant sta, standards that the city couldn't also adopt. The city is still allowed to enforce some rules on artificial turf, just can't prohibit it altogether. Um, next slide. So proponents of artificial turf will say that it conserves a lot of, a significant amount of water, reduces harmful chemicals, uh, is lower maintenance cost and is aesthetically pleasing. Next slide. So the city's perspective on why we would want to regulate artificial turf, um, is that living materials clean air, helps clean the water, helps to recharge groundwater supply, reduce heat, reduce stormwater runoff. Um, it's, the synthetic turf systems may be permeable, but are frequently installed on compacted grade, which would reduce the permeability. So when we're talking about permeability and pervious requ, allowances, what we're talking about when there is heavy storms, that the water runs off and doesn't kind of sit in place or slowly drain into the ground, it's harder, there's fewer places for the water to penetrate and go into that particular area. And we do actually have a sample here, which we can pass around of something that, uh, a newer turf. There's different types of, our astroturf, artificial turf, some, you know, if you have been to Home Depot, sometimes you have a big roll of, of that astroturf, it kind of looks like a carpet, very short. This is a, I would say a nicer version of it, more, uh, trying to emulate real grass and whatnot, you can pass it around. But I wouldn't ask you to look at the bottom of it, because the bottom of it, you see a couple of holes and those holes are pretty spaced out. And that is what we're talking about when we're talking about the drainage. The, you know, grass, natural grass would have more surface area that water can just easily go through. And so if I can go to the next slide, please? So here's a couple of examples of newer installations that have been, uh, that located in Lauderdale. You can see that it can be nice, uh, um, when newly and freshly installed. But you also do see in that lower right-hand picture that it definitely has a different appearance to it than, um, than real grass. Next slide. And here are some not-so-great examples, uh, the installations that have maybe been in a little bit longer and, um, worn through. The last point we'll make is, if you go to the next slide, Andre, that some of the um, goals, I would say that the proponents have with artificial turf, conserving, um, significant amount of water, reducing harmful chemicals, lower maintenance costs. I would argue that there are other more natural solutions if the city commission wants to consider those things as, uh, for the residents, as an alternative to grass. I would say that this, opening this type of, um, landscaping up to other parts of the city and making this more permissive, which currently the code wouldn't allow this much non-living pervious, would, would require more landscape, more planting materials. And so going in the direction of zero scapeing, going in the direction of more natural, um, products in people's homes to help reduce the cost of the water, help reduce maintenance costs, help reduce chemicals. I think that there are alternatives, um, that the city commission could consider. And if we go to the last slide, uh, staff's recommendations, so opening up to this as a conversation, I know that someone had questions about artificial turf and we know that we have questions from the residents, so our recommendations would be to amend, we would have to amend the city regulations, uh, city land of regulations to be consistent with Florida statutes. Um, we would recommend establishing some sort of a limit on the amount of turf, possibly continuing it with the policy that we had in having it just be in the rear, um, rear yard, establishing a maximum that may be allowed to be put on properties so that the pervious, uh, calculations and would, would be maintained and we wouldn't have too much runoff into the city swales or into the roads or into people's neighboring properties. Um, and so adopting some, uh, or adopting some regulations that would be natural alternatives and increasing the allowances of those other materials, rocks, mulch, et cetera. So that's.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. So, um, just first, city clerk, just, um, make sure that the record reflects that vice mayor. That Vice Mayor is now here, okay, and thank you Daniel for that presentation. Um, as it relates to the law itself that has been executed now, can you tell me specifically the language? Or maybe the city attorney can do so for me.
Uh, Daniel had it up, uh, and.
Andre, would you go back a couple of slides where it said Florida statutes, goes three or four slides back, back?
Mayor, uh, ba- basically the law prohibits cities from prohibiting artificial turf in residential area. And the state um, agency is required to adopt some rules that local government must follow. But those rules haven't been finally adopted yet, so uh, so it's still in a quandary in terms of the law. But we cannot really uh adopt a prohibition that single family homes cannot have artificial turf. Right now it's permitted in the backyard, uh, but we can't say residents, you cannot. Uh, install artificial turf in different areas, we have to wait and see until the rules are.
So we're not making any sort of suggestion for amendments right now, right? Because we cannot.
Uh, you can't prohibit it, right now we are just waiting for the guidance uh from the state agency that.
In terms of the the ins and outs, but for sure, we cannot prohibit it.
Correct.
Okay.
You allow it in the backyard, I think you stated that earlier right now as we speak.
That's been our policy, uh, the the draft rules were released from the Department of Environmental Protection.
They still not final, I think.
Right, it was just drafted, it's been several months though, so based off of those drafts, we were trying to get some direction from this provision on how to go forward.
And and I think to this Daniel's point, there there has been a request from the public. Uh, as it relates to the use of artificial uh turf. Uh, throughout the yard, not just in the backyard, currently our policy only allows for it to be in the backyard, the state. Says that you can't prohibit it, which we're not, but what our policy currently is, is that you can utilize it in the backyard. But there has been a request to use it throughout the entire yard, so I think that's why we're having the discussion. Uh, here today and I see uh, an individual who actually made that request present, so I'm sure he would like to speak on that.
Yeah, we'll give him an opportunity to speak, um, I know that we've had some discussions with commercial properties Kenny. Um, case in point, the ice cream, Cleveland Ice Cream, where they were fine because they had. Artificial turf in the front and then they had to, of course, dig it up and so on and so forth.
I think that was a little different because.
So this applies to them as well?
It it would, because there's a process and I and and what we're saying is that to. I guess to formalize what that process is and then the locations for the use of it. Uh, we would need some guidance for that and and I think in the in the in the.
And when you say guidance, I mean, if the law is telling us that we can't prohibit it, what kind of guidance are we looking for?
I think my suggestion, uh, Daniel, I I don't know. We need to make a recommendation commission, especially in the front yard area, in terms of percentage.
Right.
Uh, and and I think that would be the best course.
Yes.
Uh, for the commission versus, I don't know if that's part of your recommendation today, I haven't seen it.
Well, I I think his recommendation is the backyard only.
Yes.
That that's what's.
But but according to the law, can we actually say that?
We're not prohibiting the use in the yard, so again, I'll I'll yield to the city attorney.
Play on, okay.
I'll yield to the city attorney, but that's our recommendation and I think that's why we're looking for guidance because I that we do have residents who are requesting to utilize it. In places other than in their backyard.
Okay, so the law says that you can prohibit it, but we are saying in our code. That you can have it in your backyard, but we would prefer not to have it in the front.
That's how we currently operate.
And what is your recommendation?
Our recommendation would be to maintain that and actually.
And keep it that way.
Codify that and have it with some more specific standards, yes.
Okay, so I, what I would suggest is that um, your department come with the standards, the things that you would recommend. And propose it to us and then we can see if that works. Because we are laypeople as it relates to this sort of thing, right? This is your area of expertise, so you would be able to give us a little bit more information on that. All we would like to do is adhere to the law, that's it.
And I think part of our reason for having this on the workshop versus doing that first. Is to allow the public an opportunity to speak on it and then receive some feedback from the commission before going through that process. So ultimately we would get there, but we would like to hear from the commission and the public before, so that we know what what we're drafting based on our recommendations.
Okay, fair enough, all right, so when I saw this on the agenda. I was hoping that we were gonna do away totally with artificial turf. Because I was looking more on the parks that we have, right, and I know that the sports park is utilized a lot. And I've gotten a lot of complaints, I'm not sure, I I believe that Commissioner Campbell is probably gonna debunk my notion. Um, but I, we've received a lot of complaints as it relates to artificial turf there, especially the kids who are playing soccer. Because the injury seems to be higher and more severe with the artificial turf than with the regular grass. So I know that we've been having conversations around this, we started the conversation sometime um, November, December of last year. Trying to see if we can look at quotes to bring back that field um to to regular, because simply it is our our main sports arena. That we have the kids coming and play and we've been getting a lot, lots and lots of complaints as it relates to that. Um, I understand the the idea of it being uh more cost efficient. Understand that and the water component and all of that, and it probably serves us better aesthetically. Longer period of time without spending much monies because of this, the way that it is made. Um, but as it relates to this particular item with the residential. What would be, what is your issue with it being in front of the yard? Just the way that it looks?
No, our issues are about the permeability, our issues are about the as long term aesthetics of it.
Okay.
And and that there are other natural solutions that could be implemented.
And we would have to amend the code to be able to, okay, have those sort of options, okay, all right. Um, at this time, Commissioner Campbell.
You you raised the issue that is actually not on the agenda, but.
Yes, sir.
Let me me respond to that um first, is that we tend to hold on to. Talking points of fifty years ago. Um, as far as turf or sports, commercial use is that. We're talking about initially the turf we had. Was prone to having injuries, we have walked away from that concept. And the modern turf does not do that. But we continue to speak about what happened in the past, so um. The cost of trying to go back to the old situation. Versus the small deficiencies in the turf. Is absolutely not worth it, because there is, I can give an example of the sports park. The only way the city can utilize that park as it has been doing for the past many years. If it's artificial turf, it's almost impossible. The city is not privileged as sunrise and other cities, so they have multiple, multiple, multiple parks. And therefore they can rotate the parks significantly. In the city of Lord Hill, we just have a few parks, we have only one sports park. And for it to be utilized as it is, seven days a week, twelve months a year. It can only be done with artificial artificial turf, so the injury issue is for the. Turf prior, but these modern turf do not have that statistic of injury. But it's not on the agenda, so why should I speak more about it, so.
I beg to differ, but I understand.
But it's not on the agenda, but um, in in terms of what is actually on the agenda. We have within the city several places that are prone to flooding. And anything to me that will increase the possibility of more flooding. Is actually should be opposed. Um, this section at the back of the artificial turf. Does not, as you presented, allow the water to go down. It runs off and where it's gonna go. It could be towards my property or your property, because the water will go somewhere. And as it is now, um, I know we have standards within the city of a percentage of your property. Can, has to have grass, so the water can go down. So if, and it's not working, even with the standard we have. And therefore there's tremendous flooding within the city, there are folks who. Probably have been grandfathered that have extensive pave there in their back of their homes. And therefore the water has to go somewhere, so I would oppose it based on that, if you now multiply. In a community, many residents have the ability to do this. Then you're going to double the problems that we have in the city. In addition to that, it's going to be a nightmare for code enforcement. Because it's not just taking a piece of material and throwing it on your lawn. It has to be installed in such a way that it's meant to to to, the average person. Do not have the resource to do so, so they're just gonna grab a piece of thing and throw. On the front of their 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 lawn, which is not appropriately dealt with. And that is going to be a hell of a nightmare for code to regulate. These things to look under it, to make sure you put it down correctly and you maintain it. Some people think that, oh, once I do this, that's it. These things need to be maintained. And if you're not going to maintain them, it, then we're gonna have serious problems, okay? So I.
What is your position?
I don't think it's a wise idea, I mean, the extent to. To how we're gonna have problems, it's twenty years from now, we're gonna regret it.
So if I may respond to a couple of things that you said, one i- in particular about the requirement for grass or living. Living landscaping, that's not necessarily true and that's the argument of for artificial turf is it's about pervious. Area and so that would be one of the things that we would want to clarify through the code. And making a distinction between how much of art- artificial turf might be permitted versus. You know, just pervious area and maintaining a certain amount of pervious area and that would be something that we could provide. For going forward with that legislation to have those nuances, to make sure that. We can't have those arguments or we don't have to have those arguments with residents, then it's a more clear guidance for the residents.
Okay, uh, fair enough, I know that the gentleman that had the complaint is here. Um, Commissioner Dunn and Vice Mayor would like to speak, would you prefer them to speak and then, okay, sir? Okay, all right, um, we can do that, you have something for us. Yep, thank you so much. Okay, so Commissioner Dunn will speak, we'll hear from the residents and then we'll have our Vice Mayor that places on the agenda to close us out. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, um, so Daniel, thank you for clarifying um, the request. So as I understand it, you're asking us to give specific guidance around what's allowed and what's not and where it's allowed, right?
Not super specific, because to the point of the mayor, we understand that you, I'm not. Going to come here and expecting you to say we want five percent, ten percent, none of those types.
Just general guidelines.
General guidance, so that we have an understanding of when we come before with legislation or of rules of land development regulations that we know. More on the lenient side of what the code should allow or or not, so that's kind of what the direction that we're looking for.
Got it, so just a preliminary research on my own in preparation for this meeting. Um, there are a couple of things that I am concerned about and would like to, if not. Now, but at a later date, get some clarity from staff on, so preliminary research shows several journal articles about chemical exposure. Um, in fact, there's an article in the Environmental Science and Technology that talks about heavy metals and VOCs. Um, which are chemicals that are in these type of material and so. Uh, which could have a negative impact for children, so I would like some clarity on what the chemical exposure is so that we're we're aware. Um, and then the American Journal for Public Health talks about the fact that this could increase temperature anywhere from thirty to fifty um degrees. Which then increases the risk of heat, um, of 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 heat related illnesses when. Youth are playing outside, right, so I I'm curious about that and like the other environmental concerns. Um, so I I don't know if that's something that you've already looked at in your research that you can help educate me on now, or if that's something that you would need to come back. With the specifics at a later date.
Yeah, I'll definitely have to come back on the chemicals and when we do more research of figuring out whether or not it is permitted, we'll wanna. Kind of vet some materials and have some idea about what would or would not be acceptable for Lord Hill. Um, as far as the temperature goes, the, that's the same rationale. For why the city requires like landscaping in park in parking lots and why cities are hotter than, you know, the countryside.
Right.
So it's the the heat island, the urban island effect, heat island effect, heat island effect.
Yeah, and there's actually a study that that talks about um, cities with less trees have a higher crime rate too. So there are, there are public health links to trees and and temperature and all of that, so. Um, I would be part of my decision making process, I need to fully understand and be able to do a cost risk benefits analysis around. Um, chemical exposure, the public health exposure, um, and and so that I can make an educated decision, thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner, uh, Daniel, if you would go back, I think you had some information as it relates to the heat in your presentation, right?
I did.
Okay.
Andre, would you go back to? I think it's like the third slide, Florida Friendly Landscaping.
Right.
One, back one slide from the where we are now, so this was taken from the Florida Friendly Landscaping.
Right, right, I saw that.
Yeah, and so their analysis, um, and I'd have to see what the date on it is, I don't remember.
Right. Okay, oh, wonderful, thank you so much and vice, excuse me, I'm sorry, sir, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Chris Hood, fifty one oh one Northwest sixty six Avenue, you probably saw my home up there, somebody took a picture of it sometime. Um, I want to talk about something completely different than this subject matter for just a few moments, it's the first page of the guide that I gave you. And it talks about the THM, the in our water supply, and I believe Commissioner Dunn, you probably know about this from Nancy Bowen in Coral Springs. We have a serious problem caused by grass clippings and we are way over the EPA limit on this issue. It does and it doesn't have anything to do with artificial turf, but our habits over the years have created a situation where not just cancer, but also birth defects in children. And I think it needs to be addressed with some type of policy from uh, the city, just to inform people to take care of their waste, take care of their grass clippings. Landscape waste, it can reduce this, it's not gonna stop it, but it's a good start and a step in the right direction. So people cut their grass, leave the clippings laying around. It interacts with the chlorine in the water when we treat the water and it causes this high level of THMs, which cause cancer. I don't think there's anybody in this room who can say they haven't been affected by cancer, everybody has, including myself. So there's nobody in this community that's pro cancer, I can assure you of that, so this is something we can do a little bit about. And artificial grass does help this situation in a very small way, this is caused by many things, but there's something we can do about it step by step. And I want to make a clarification. Commissioner Campbell, you mentioned that the grass causes runoff and flooding into the street. That is probably the biggest question I've had about artificial turf. It's gonna flood the streets. It's just not true. In this brochure that I gave you, we give some information about drainage. It's very, very important. This is built on a substrate that absorbs water like a sponge, doesn't run into the street. When I had natural grass, I had puddles in my lawn. When I converted it, it was leveled out. Nothing goes into the street, it all goes down into the ground. It's a complex process. I've given you one of the engineering drawings, you'll see it in this brochure as well. But I wanted to make that point first about the THMs in our water supply, very, very important. And Commissioner Dunn, I think you had a question about chemicals, bleaching. This is where we have to be very careful about what we draft for artificial turf. Very careful about making the specifications so they don't leach into the soil. Every piece of artificial turf doesn't do this. There's certain brands, certain qualities that will prevent this leaching. And that's very important to write that into our specs. And that also goes for cool yarn. There's something called cool yarn technology that reduces the heat of artificial turf. So all this information, I do have it, I'd be glad to give it to, uh, Mr. Barton so he could take it into consideration in drafting the ordinance. But there is cool yarn now, reduces the heat. Artificial turf is hot, but there's technology to reduce it. So that's pretty much new. And if you look on the forever plastics page, you'll see a graph of different products that create forever plastic residue. It's way, way down the list when it comes to artificial turf. There are no PFAS chemicals in artificial turf, it's practically zero. There's a organization that we belong to as a city called the Florida Stormwater Association. They were one of the biggest lobbyists for this artificial turf bill, House Bill six eighty three. They, uh, with their permission, you'll see a letter of recommendation for the draft for artificial turf for the state of Florida. Lot of good suggestions in here, and I think this would help us establish the proper requirements for artificial turf as well. They put a lot of studies on this and this letter you see here, the sections of it are really complete. Our artificial turf that we have in our home now complies with every single element of this letter, every single one. Doesn't leach chemicals, fully absorbent, has a substrate built underneath. So we did it the right way the first time and I invite each commissioner to come and take a look. Ray, you've seen it. Everyone, you take a look, run the water hose on it, see the water absorb. It's there for testing, I invite you to do that. Drainage rates, you'll see a page in here, there's a record rainfall. And I believe it was Virginia, it was, in nineteen forty three. It was thirteen inches of rain in one hour. This artificial turf can beat that rate. Beats the rate of natural grass as well, which if you have the thatch underneath, it's terrible at draining. This has been tested and tested again. When I went to your, uh, your your department that handles the permits, which I have a pending permit now for this grass, I had them come out and do another test and it beat my neighbors by a long shot. We ran the water on my neighbor's lawn, ran it on mine. Hers was in the street probably within two minutes, it was flooding the street. And the last page in here, you'll see an examination of filtration based on natural grass and based on artificial turf. And you'll see there's a big difference and how thatch affects that. And you'll see also my engineering drawing that was applied to my landscaping. And I think this is a good standard to go by, there is no higher standard in the country. There is no higher standard to install artificial turf than what we've done here in Lauderdale as an example. Q and A session just talks about grass and I think one of the commissioners mentioned this is expensive now. We all remember the cost of flat screen TVs, five or six thousand, now they're three hundred dollars. It's gonna be the same thing with this. This is just a new technology that hasn't caught on yet, but the prices will come down. We have two of the largest artificial grass warehouses right here in Broward County. They distribute all over the state. So if you want to do research, those are the places to go. One is in Hollywood, one is out near the airport. And they have every form of artificial grass you can think of. They have the high quality, they have the low quality. I think we should use these resources to establish our our guidelines. The very last page in the book talks about lifespan. And I did see a picture up there of a grass that had deteriorated. So there's some of this grass, it's a five year guarantee, ten year guarantee, some has twenty year guarantee. And that's a replacement guarantee, whereas if it changes colors or it goes bad, it'll be replaced. That's the kind of thing we should demand our residents adopt, longest lifespan as possible. And you can see down the list, pretty much everything I've talked about. This grass can be recycled at the end of life. Everybody talks about these plastics that we can't get rid of. Since we can't get rid of them, why not utilize them for a second purpose and a third purpose? That's how this grass is designed, it can be recycled. Any questions on anything?
Well, no, please, just if you can finish the presentation, sir, then we'll.
So, you know, change is tough for people, it's just hard. Anytime you want to make a change, you know, there was a time in this country when people protested paved roads. They wanted to keep the dirt roads and, you know, it was kind of like, you know, rustic and it looked nice. People even blocked highways to say, we don't want that freeway, we don't want that highway, we want our dirt road. Well, now look at it. Anybody here want a dirt road? No, ten years from now, you're gonna see a great deal of artificial turf all over Florida because something's changing called the climate. The way our lawns used to survive, they can't take this heat anymore. It's too hot, it's too humid, and the grass is gonna be dying. I replaced three lawns in seven years. Had I put in a fourth one, I'd be replacing that one too. That's very expensive. We need choice and alternatives, not just one way. So that's why I hope you recommend the proper artificial grass for our city. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Um, I see that our Vice Mayor is would like to have some remarks.
Yeah, thank you and.
You may sit, sir.
Thanks. Staff, uh, Daniel and your team, thank you for the research. Uh, I appreciate Chris bringing this up. You've done a lot of research within this, uh, package you handed out. I think starting off with this, uh, Florida Stormwater Association is a good starting point. And maybe you can talk with Daniel about that. Um, you, Daniel, do you have the same Stormwater Association? Okay, yeah. So I think if we can come up with some, uh, proper language that'll work and bring it back to the team here to take a look at, um, I think it'd be a s- a step forward.
Okay, thank you kindly and Commissioner Campbell.
First of all, I did not say that the turf by itself will cause flooding. What I did say is that anything that will increase the possibility of flooding. Now, I heard two things that you said. One, at your property and you're the expert. The average property owner may not be experts. So therefore you more likely had done your property in the way that it is fill fulfill the requirement of the water staying there. I understand that. But the average persons like myself, um, I I know water seems to travel to the easiest pathway. And if you, your property is sloped and the water goes on this, more likely it will not try to go down, it will try to go runoff. That's one thing. The the second thing, as I mentioned in terms of, uh, for us to do a policy, we have to think the practicality of enforcing things to be done the proper way. I do know that even if you are doing certain pavement, even at the back of your house and the requirement is that you should leave a certain amount of grass here. And if you do not do it according to the requirement, you are then asked to, and engineering can help me here, to get, uh, specialists to make sure you have proper irrigation. The average person, I can tell you, even to get consultant to do that, it it is extremely costly. So I'm thinking about making a broad policy where the majority of our residents will just say, okay, we can put these stuff, they're just gonna throw it there. They're not going to necessarily go through the process to make sure it works properly. And that will be my concern that, um, if proper irrigation is not dealt with, then we're gonna have some problems.
Okay, thank you. So I think at this point we are gonna close this out. But what I would suggest is that I have this written down and hopefully, okay, hopefully I can find it. Um, I had some, okay, well, let me just go off. Here we are. All right, so Daniel, one of the things that I would like is for us to just assess the other cities and see what they are doing or what their plans are, considering that this is new law. Um, and then in addition to that, there are so many moving parts, as you mentioned, to this new law as well. And things have not been finalized, right? Nothing is is really concrete. So I would love to be able to give our city attorney enough opportunity in terms of time to really dissect this and to look at it and be able to then perhaps work with you to come up with some more recommendations as well. That would be, um, complimentary to what we have heard today as well as what the DA has said, right? Um, so with that, I think that this is a great start to a conversation. Thank you so much for coming and giving us this information. And so for persons like myself where this is kind of Chinese and Mandarin and all of the other languages that I don't know, um, it's gonna take me some time as well to read this and to be able to comprehend and then come back with something that is substantial. And I I believe that from what I've heard from most of my colleagues, it seems the same. I will, there, there's a gentleman here, yes, that would like to to say something. But at this time, considering we have other items on the agenda, um, yes, sir, if you can come to the podium, please. Yep, and then you will be the last person because I think we've given our marching orders, right, City Manager? Yes.
Hello, hello. Ooh, it's Colin here. Okay, um.
It's good for the skin, the hair, the blood, all of that.
Lot of, lot of us moved to Florida for like the heat.
Okay.
I I'm gonna be brief. Um, I I've heard, um, Mr. Mr. Mills, uh, you know, some of the points he made, I was saying, well, geez, he's making the case um, that that a lot of us are want to make. Uh, also members of our community, I kind of want to put forth kind of the general consensus. Um, so some of the things that we need to take into consideration is, um, for instance, what is the the impact of
Yes.
of the artificial turf, you know? We look at carbon impact as 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 an example where a company may, uh, offset their their footprint, offset what you're doing by putting down artificial turf or whatever you're doing because you're gonna make it better someplace else. And generally, the community is saying that they don't necessarily want to offset it somewhere else. They don't necessarily want it in 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 the community. The things that, um, some of the points that were made, the heat, you know, I think most everyone agreed that it it builds heat as if we need more heat down here in South Florida. Drainage is the other concern. Um, it was said that, um, it 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 it's not, it doesn't negatively impact drainage or it impacts it some a little. So what is it, a slight impact, a medium impact, a large impact on drainage? We really can't afford to have any impact on drain. We already struggle to manage the water, the water runoff. We already struggle to lower canals when we think it's gonna be a lot of, uh, a a storm or a lot of rain. You know, we get rain on average the whole month of July, August, September, here we are through through October. So if we're talking about the need for, uh, water conservation, we get more water than we need in in those months. And I I would be, I I I would be surprised to see that any type of artificial turf is gonna drain faster than 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 actual lawn. If it doesn't rain for 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 one day, the lawn is drying out. So we don't necessarily need artificial turf to to benefit us in 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 that way. So we talked about drainage, we talked about heat, um, disposal. So even if the best lasts for twenty years, what happens to it then? I think we struggle to recycle what we have now. It's been said that most of what supposedly gets recycled doesn't really get recycled, even though we separated and put it out. So what happens in twenty years or if it's not the great one, what happens in ten years? What are we gonna slice it up and put it in a landfill? It's not, it's not gonna decompose. So that's something else to consider. Um, wh- why would we need something else that's petroleum based? We're already taking away enough of, um, the natural, you know, we're already, as as a people, we're already taking away enough of the natural. I think the purpose here was to come up with guidelines. Um, I I think it's a, it's a, it's gonna be a a fine line to walk. And I I I expect our our city attorney is gonna have to dig into this, um, statute. I don't think the state actually opened up the the floor to people like the ones I'm speaking on behalf of. So I think if 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 the point is to come up with a guy with guidelines, um, err on the side of the people, not necessarily the side of the companies or the the folks that can afford, you know, the very best. And the only other thing I would say is that, you know, if we have, uh, rules on the books, we need to enforce what's on the books. You know, uh, we need to enforce what what is already there. And you already have, you already have rules, guidelines and and ordinance in place, we really need to enforce those. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you so much for your comments, sir. Before you leave, can you please state your name and your address?
Paul Walker, six four two five Northwest Fifty First Court.
Fantastic, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep, and Daniel, as mentioned again, just doing a survey in terms of other cities, what it is that they're doing, giving our city attorneys some time to work with you to dissect what the statute is and
Sure.
and we come back with something, all right? So perhaps, uh, I guess City Manager, we work on when we'll bring this back to the commission, okay? All right, wonderful, thank you so much. We are now on to number four A, okay? Um, a discussion of accessory dwelling units and this has been requested by our Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, and I think our staff's gonna talk about it. There's a recent law that has changed, uh, to allow accessory dwelling units. Very similar to just the, uh, one we were just discussing about, uh, Florida saying what we, what we're not prohibited
Yeah.
to do. So this is coming down the pipeline and so it's kind of getting prepared for it and making sure that we have those guidelines. So, uh, with that, I'll let you go ahead and take off.
Okay, uh, thank you. Andre, if we can move up to the second slide. So our current regulations, the city's land development regulations do not allow accessory dwelling units. Um, accessory dwelling units, for anyone that is not familiar with that, also called in-law suites, granny flats, carriage houses, garage apartments, or abbreviated as ADUs. Um, no reference to any of those type of things in our land development regulations. Our comprehensive plan, uh, does speak to, um, it doesn't exactly call it accessory dwelling units, but it's something similar to that and it suggests that it might be permitted, um, if it is less than five hundred square feet and it could be counted as a half dwelling unit. And so that is in our comp plan, so since it is in our comprehensive plan and our land use element, uh, that means a change to our land development regulations could be feasible without a longer process. It's also permitted in the county and in the Florida statutes. So the Florida statutes acknowledges the shortage of affordable housing and defines affordability. And so they would also permit potentially accessory dwelling units by cities. Uh, next slide, Andre, please. So advantages of accessory dwelling units, uh, they are, it would provide housing options, more options, affordable options. Um, if if done right, um, affordable options, um if if done right, um uh it supports aging in place and multi-general multi-generational living. So having that mother-in-law suite, in-law suite, um would allow for more people and and a larger space. Um there's economic benefits, so a homeowner that maybe doesn't need as much space, you could uh rent it out and have additional income. Um and it would be an efficient use of space and the existing infrastructure that the city has um by not, you know, building a brand-new property or or connect to a new water space, water source. It could allow for the existing use of of a property and maximize the use of a property. Um flexibility and community stability. So access accessory dwelling units could allow for adaptive reuse of existing structures such as garages. Um next slide, please. So challenges of accessory dwelling units would be the infrastructure and service impacts. So water, sewer, stormwater systems may need to be upgraded by the city uh to accommodate more people in an area if there are a lot of accessory dwelling units, that if a lot of if one neighborhood or area really embraces the accessory dwelling units thing, it could be more impact or strain on the city's resources and infrastructure. Um enforcement and administrative burdens, so requiring permits, inspections, monitoring systems, um making sure that there is sufficient parking for the additional unit or additional a couple of of individuals that may be occupying that space. The with the enforcement, the illegal or unpermitted accessory dwelling units. So it conversions that do not meet building standards, conversions that, you know, people put it on the market and don't go through the appropriate city channels to get it legalized. Um and then fiscal considerations. So i- it could increase um property values and that could be a a burden on some people with fixed incomes. Um uh next slide, please, Andre. So here are a couple of images of what accessory dwelling units could look like. Um they can be attached or detached to a structure. So I have both examples of what a detached um accessory dwelling unit could be and uh as well as an attached, so kind of building up on top of a garage would be an example, an example of an attached. Otherwise, you know, a attached accessory dwelling unit could become just an interior renovation that doesn't make any exterior improvement. So maybe no, no change to the character or the community. Um last slide, Andre, please. So our recommendations would be if the city commission wants to um proceed with allowing accessory dwelling units, we would need to change the the land development regulations to note that it is allowed, provide some sort of guidance and guidelines as far as what would or would not be permitted. Um staff is recommending that we would limit accessory dwelling units to be for a long-term rental if possible and not for a short-term basis. If we, again, thinking of the intent for accessory dwellings to be adding affordable housing, making sure that those are long-term units on on the record. Um the city commission would need to direct staff to make those changes and adopt certain standards, and then we would come back to you with those specific standards. Um and lastly, make sure that it is, accessory dwelling units are reflected in Schedule M, which Schedule M is our minimum housing code. So currently, the city goes out and inspects rent uh residential rental units to make sure that there are building permits, make sure it's safe for the inhabitants. And so we would wanna make sure that if we did add accessory dwelling units, that the community standards staff were to uh inspect those as well as part of their routine. So that concludes my comments, and I'm happy to take your thoughts.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank, thank, thank you, Daniel. Um I would like for you to move forward and try to um come up with some recommendations on some guidance. As far as minimum unit size, five hundred square feet, I would not put that as of yet, five hundred square feet.
Would not what? I'm sorry.
It was three hundred before.
Think it's ma- maximum unit size.
Yeah.
No, and this recommendation that says minimum square footage of three hook, minimum size.
Sorry, Mac, that would be my mistake.
All right. And then um have you taken a look at all that? You may not have kind of did an aerial view of all of the um homes in Lauderdale and you put in a five-foot setback. Did you see how many homes that might qualify or be available for ADU?
No, did not do that type of an es- assessment at this moment. But we can give you some sort of guidance or or try to do some sort of analysis on the city as far as how how and where those could be permitted
Okay.
when we do that presentation.
And and if I may just add one thing to that also, uh vice mayor, as it relates to uh the accessory dwelling unit, it does not have to necessarily be in addition to an to a home. One of the things that we receive complaints on now is illegal garage
Yes.
conversions and those type things which are not allowed. So this would be an opportunity to do it right, where it can qualify for an accessory dwelling unit so that you can utilize it uh in its intended way. So we can do the the make the observation as you suggested. But I think what we will miss, though, are those individual homes, right? Where they can uh under their current footprint, make conversions, correct?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yep, all right, yeah. No, we're good with that. And uh I don't think there was a parking requirement. I think one of the things specifically, they said they couldn't make one. But I'm open if you can kind of come up with something.
So you said that there's something currently going through this legislature that would
The current legislature says you cannot require additional.
Repeat that. Uh uh obviously, the parking staff, we gotta work together because you're talking about very limitation, limit property and any additional parking requirement is gonna be very tough to meet if the policymakers wanna move in that direction. I think uh uh from what's going on in several cities, I think we need to make clear that RVs are not accessory dwelling unit. I have seen that's a problem in number municipalities, people will park RVs into the yard. Next thing you know, they rent that RV as accessory. So we need to make clear our code does not permit that.
Yeah. So so we'll look at that. And I can just tell you from a from a residential standpoint, we do receive often many complaints about parking and issues that we have under with current units uh with the number of vehicles and how they're being parked throughout. So that's a code issue that we're currently having. So I think if we're gonna allow ADUs, then that's something that they should be required to have a sufficient parking if they're gonna be allowed to have additional persons on their property. So I think, again, to your point, yes, we we do have that issue as as far as RVs. We received that complaint too, that that individual uh are renting out RVs that are parked on the side of their home. So we'll we'll try to address all of those matters uh as as we move this forward and bring it back before to the commission.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Daniel. We appreciate it. Okay?
Anything else? Okay.
So we're on to item number five, and this is a discussion of OIG closeout reports requested by Commissioner Dunn. I know that the city manager, you advise, city manager?
I'm listening.
Yes, you advise that you would like to, I guess, read something on the record, and you have a presentation. And then, of course, this item is Commissioner Dunn's. Go ahead, city manager.
Sure. Uh so again, there there was a uh and I and again, the memo that I'm about to read is something that was uh provided to the city commission on October the seventeenth, and it addresses the findings of the OIG investigation into Centos Corporation. And just to provide some background, on September twenty nine, twenty twenty five, uh the Broward Office of Inspector General issued a closeout, closing memorandum uh referenced OIG twenty-three dash zero zero five dash M concerning contract management practices involved in Centos Corporation Number Two, a uniform supply vendor. The review was initiated following allegations that Centos had billed municipalities nationwide at rates exceeding those established under cooperative purchasing contracts. The OIG obtained the and analyzed records from Lauderdale for the period uh of October first, twenty twenty one, through February, twenty twenty three. Seventeen Broward County cities, including the law, including the city of Lauderdale, were included in the review sample. The OIG's assessment of Lauderdale found no evidence of misconduct or gross mismanagement by city staff. And just to highlight the findings in detail, the OIG findings confirmed the following. One, no misconduct or gross mismanagement occurred by the city. Two, minor overbillings were identified, amounting to only a few cents per transaction. Three, the primary concern was the absence of consistent internal controls to verify contract pricing and prevent potential duplicate payments. Four, staff did not always maintain complete documentation of invoices verifications against contractual agreed prices. While the overcharges were minimal, the OIG emphasized that weak controls in similar cases have historically led to larger financial risks in other jurisdictions. Some of the corrective actions that were taken by the city. Uh one thing we do wanna point out that prior to the OIG's review, the city took proactive steps to strengthen its procurement operations. We have current staff who were reassigned to oversee the purchasing division, bringing uh bringing extensive experience and expertise in purchasing and contract management. Uh the individual holds a master's in public administration and is a certified professional public buyer. Uh this is a position that she previously held prior to decentralization of purchasing approximately seven years ago. We transitioned from a decentralized to a centralized purchasing structure to improve coordination and accountability. We've introduced new financial management software, the Tyler Technology, uh which was introduced in April, twenty twenty five. Uh Tyler Technology integrates procurement, accounts payable, contract modules, and includes automated invoice-to-purchase order matching and vendor duplication controls. We've eliminated the blanket purchase orders, the use of blanket purchase orders. All purchases now require specific itemized purchase orders with verified quantities, prices, and funding sources. And we also centralized contract repository and digital trial, uh audit trial, trails. This ensures that all purchases are linked to approved contracts accessible for verification. Following the OIG findings, the city implemented the follow following corrective actions. We now have mandatory staff training uh for purchasing and departmental staff. Uh they are scheduled to complete training in NIGP and GFOA best practices for contract administration. Quarter, there are quarterly compliance reviews. Uh by the way of the finance department, they now conduct continuous internal monitoring to ensure adherence to the city's code and purchasing thresholds. The OIG recommendations and city alignment. The OIG encourages all municipalities to strengthen invoice verification, cross-departmental training, and procurement uh documentation procedures to safeguard public funds. The city of Lauderdale's actions now fully aligned with and in several areas exceed those recommendations. In conclusion, the OIG confirmed that the city of Lauderdale acted in good faith with no findings of misconduct. Although the review period dates back to twenty twenty one, immediately following my appointment as interim city manager in November, twenty twenty four, measures were taken ahead of the issuance of the OIG's report in September, twenty twenty five. The corrective measures taken, particularly the centralization of purchasing, the modernization of our financial system, the elimination of blanket purchase orders, and mandatory staff training directly addresses the identified internal control weaknesses. These reforms have strengthened the city's financial oversight, improved transparency, and reinforced accountability in the procurement operations. Uh just one, just to add one more quick uh note, uh the finance director, Sean Henderson, just have a few items to touch on that were mentioned uh in the report and actions taken by the city.
Okay. So before he does that, um city manager, I know you read this, and um it's very detailed. But if you can just quickly, in two, three sentences, give us just a synopsis of the matter.
So in short, there was a, there is a uniform company that is utilized nationwide. Uh and there are what we call piggyback contracts, which allow us to uh procure items uh from contractors that have gone through a procurement process uh in a jurisdiction outside of ours. Now, in order to utilize those contracts, we have to agree to abide by the changes uh or not the changes, but to abide by the conditions of that that contract. So it speaks specifically to items procured, it speaks to prices, unit prices, and those things. So what happened over a period of years, that vendor nationally made changes to some of their prices. So they may have increased some of their prices, marginal amounts. Uh and in some cases, that information wasn't necessarily reported to the municipalities that were utilizing those contracts. So there was a whistleblower who actually notified uh the government that there had been changes to those agreements. So the uh government decided to nationally uh do an investigation into this particular company. Uh in Broward County, there are seventeen cities that utilize that contract. We were, they randomly selected a number of cities. We were one of those cities that was randomly selected.
Okay. And the findings?
Right. So and and again, the the amount, the total amount, I think, was about, uh what was it? Nineteen hundred dollars. So they, again, they inspected uh a year and a half worth of invoices, thousands of transactions, and I think the total discrepancy was nineteen hundred dollars in total that we're speaking of.
And the OIG was able to then do the closeout letter sent to all the various cities
Correct.
in which they
So again, they they did come in, they spoke with current and a previous staff. Uh we fully cooperated, provided all the information requested as they stated. There was no misconduct, no malfeasance uh on behalf of the city. Uh again, their point was is taking a look at some of the uh internal controls that we have, whether it's invoice matching, the new software that we've implemented does that. So again, this is something that we were already looking at even ahead of them coming in.
Right.
Was implemented in my April of this year. So the, we do have controls in place now uh that guards, that guard against the issues that they've identified.
And we were not the ones that they were looking into.
Correct. It was not the city that they were investigating. It was the uh actual vendor, Centos.
Okay, great. All right. Yes, Mr. Director.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to make, again, reiterate three main points and then speak to a quotation that was in in the document. Um again, uh no misconduct or gross mismanagement by the city of Lauderdale. Observation centered on internal control enhancements, and um I feel they were constructive in nature and offer opportunities for refinement. And then lastly, uh city was proactively engaged in systematic upgrades before the report was issued and has utilized the recommendations to improve the procurement process. So I will say candidly that uh my department directors are probably a little bit upset with me in regards to the um additional obstacles that we deal with now, but it's correct. So we're implementing those, and we're meeting with them one by one to kind of figure out best way to move things forward.
Okay.
Lastly, I just wanna say um the, in my remarks, um were taken out of context. The dot, dot, dot between my statements and my explanation were left out for some reason. I utilize an example to try to articulate the complexity of small routine purchases under the city's former decentralized procurement system and outdated software. The example I gave, buying a pencil from Office Depot, illustrated how challenging it was to manage small transactions when using piggy, when using a piggyback contract, especially since those vendors have no obligation to notify the city of price changes while also acting in bad faith. The corrective action I've emphasized was the elimination of blanket purchase orders and limiting the use of piggyback contracts to ensure stronger financial control and transparency. My comments were about a tedious purchasing process, not construction or large-scale contracts. I remain confident that my record demonstrates a consistent commitment to safeguarding public funds and improving accountability.
Okay, thank you. Yalan, would you like to add anything? Okay, thank you. Um so at this time, Commissioner Dunn.
Well, I see that I've only been left with two minutes because the other item is time certain for six o'clock, so um.
No, 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 we can always come back to you. That's fine. You can start and we can come back.
All right, well, let's come back.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So we are now, we have two minutes to be able to discuss item seven. What do we do within this two minutes?
Uh can we, do we have to wait the two minutes, city attorney? Or can we start the time certain right now?
Workshop, you can start.
Okay.
Okay.
Wonderful. And so we are now on to item number seven, and then we will return back to item number five. And this is an update on sixty-fourth Avenue and the Woodlands Development Plan in Tamarack. And this has, this has been requested by our city manager, Kenny Hobbs.
Yes, uh we will have a short presentation again. Uh as uh everyone knows, there is an improvement scheduled, a home development schedule for the Woodlands, uh which is to the east of sixty-fourth Avenue in the city of Tamarack. Uh there is a, some legislation that has, that's working its way through the city of Tamarack, and we wanted to provide our residents uh with an update on what that legislation is and how it, how and if there's any potential impact on our residents along the sixty-fourth Avenue corridor. Daniel.
Thank you very much. Uh Andre, well, before I move on. So there's three hundred and thirty-five new single-family homes proposed. Um there are eight hundred and ninety single-family homes in the Woodlands community. And similar to our efforts through uh with Inverary, they also had a request to redevelop the golf course and utilize it for new single-family homes. So next slide, Andre, please. This generally shows the location of where the Woodlands uh is located relation to the city of Lauderdale, just south of Commercial and east uh west of Grok Island Road. Uh next slide. So the developer initially requested a thousand single-family units. Uh the project was only approved for three hundred and thirty-five single-family homes. The, and just to be clear, it's not like there's a lot of extra room to put anymore. They're three hundred and thirty-five, and that's where they're putting the, that's what they're gonna basically be limited to with the the proposed site plan. The developer filed several applications starting in two thousand and twenty The developer filed several applications starting in two thousand and twenty-two and is currently submitting building permits. The primary access is off of Commercial Boulevard, along with two additional secondary ingress egress access. And I'll provide an image, uh, with the map showing all the locations of the entrances in just a moment. Um, there will be three additional ingress egress locations off of Rock Island, and forty-fourth will not be used for any ingress or egress. Sixty-fourth Avenue will be used for one additional entrance. Um, the developer has agreed to make some road improvements to sixty-fourth Avenue to mitigate some traffic impacts. Next slide, Andre. So again, this generally shows the location of the, the developments and all that green inside for the, that is currently or was cur, previously a golf course is where the new homes are going to be located. Uh, next slide, please. The timeline of events. So one of the reasons why this is coming up to everyone's attention is there was a recent application for, uh, the consideration by the City of Tamarack. Earlier this month, the developer made a presentation to the Planning and Zoning Board asking for consideration of a variance. The, later, or tomorrow, day after tomorrow, they're going to be making a presentation to the City Commission to discuss the Woodlands development and considering the lot coverage, uh, to increase the size of the homes. The, so that is the request before the City Commission is to, I'll increase the lot coverage and so some of the zoning standards to allow for larger homes on the, the lot sizes that they're proposing. That's just so for the record, the city, uh, City of Lauderdale did make several, um, presentations or communications to the, the City of Tamarack e- expressing some concerns over impacts to the, the residents of Lauderdale for the proposed development. So city staff attended the Planning and Zoning Board in October of twenty twenty-three, um, a- as well as City Commission making some resolutions, uh, that were presented to the City Commission and City Manager expressing opposition to the proposed land use and rezoning. Uh, next slide, Andre. So this illustrates the high-level site plan. They're proposing several pot, what they're calling pods, and each one of those pods has a various number of single-family homes, single-family developments. And so the total number, as I mentioned, was three hundred and thirty-five. The, um, from this image, you can possibly read A, D, and, uh, A and D are the two to the furthest west, closest to Lauderdale. So A and D have nineteen and twenty-five units. And so when we go to the next slide, Andre, you can see that those are the ones that are gonna have access to, closest access, most convenient access to that sixty-fourth, um, uh, sixty-fourth Avenue, ac, new access road. It's important to note that those less than fifty homes are really gonna be out of that three hundred and thirty-five, most likely the ones that are conveniently located to sixty-fourth. The rest of that development and the majority of the pods are going to have, most likely, a lot of access other places off of Commercial and Rock Island to get in and out of the community. And if you go to the last slide, I think, Andre? Yeah, so this, the blue and the red are just a way to map out the current development. All the red are existing streets, existing networks, um, and then also show the existing, uh, entrances and exits to the community. The blue are the new roadways and new networks that are being proposed with this development. And again, going to that, um, pot A and D where that access is. So those, again, less than fifty homes are gonna be what will likely have the best access and connection to sixty-fourth. All the other ones will likely be using either the main artery through the middle or have the best access out of Rock Island. So when you actually look at the site plan, that's basically what it boils down to. I'm happy to answer whatever questions that I possibly can, but, uh, that, that is what is currently being considered by the City Commission is a variance to allow for larger homes, and they're not changing any of the access or changing any of the other site plan, uh, things, uh, components that were already approved by the City Commission and are currently under
Okay.
building permit.
Thank you, Daniel. Um, the city manager and I spoke, and we're gonna do this a little bit differently. I know that we'll give time for my colleagues to speak, but considering we have a large amount of persons here, and I believe it's for this particular item, um, would a raise of hands of those that would like to speak? Okay, not that many. Okay. If each of, of you that would like to speak just come to the front, then we will hear from you first and then we will ensue our conversation here. Mister Katz? Mister Katz? You being the Homeowners Association President, um, would you like to lead the conversation? Go ahead. And then, of course, Miss Bowie.
Good evening.
If we can have a line, please, so we can identify those individuals that will be speaking? Yes, sir, you can stand there. Okay, got it.
I am here as, uh, I am here as Forest Lakes Estates President. I believe that
Your name and your address.
My name is Shalom Katz, four nine three three Northwest sixty-sixth Avenue. I'm here representing Forest Lakes Estates. Um, I believe that the City of Lauderdale still has the power to block the entrance on sixty-fourth, just like they did on forty-fourth. There's no reason, I know he just said there's going to be two blocks there, but also B, which is another thirty-six homes are also go very close to that entrance. As of now, the traffic is quite blacked up. Just last, uh, two nights ago, I was driving, there was a fire truck stopped over there, c- complete standstill for twenty minutes. Um, and it's just gonna get worse. It's our only entrance. We don't have any other entrances or exits for emergency vehicles. By adding an entrance on sixty-fourth Avenue, you are literally harming lives, putting lives at risk, and it has to be stopped. And another very important thing, which is very shocking, is that, uh, the City of Tamarack and the City of Lauderdale is represented by the same lawyer on this situation, which I believe is complete ludicrous.
Thank you, Mister Katz. Okay, Miss Bowie.
Good evening. I'm Gil Bowie, uh, six four three three Northwest fifty-third Street, Lauderdale. I am a member of the Cypress Hollow Board, and I echo what Mister Katz has said regarding, uh, entrance. You know, we only have one way in, one out, one way out, and to add these additional homes and traffic is ludicrous. There is, and I don't know if it's been considered, I understand that there's gonna be some construction of a venue on Commercial, and we need to look at another way of getting out of sixty-fourth Avenue. And perhaps we can try to look and see if there's a way to create another exit out of La, out of our community. Secondly, I am not really understanding how we're gonna do construction with the large trucks coming in and opening and trying to create another, uh, way of getting out. I understand we need it, but we need to understand what the plan is gonna be when you actually start construction, when you have kids going to school, people trying to go to work, and just, as you said, emergency issues brings that community to a stop. So we need to understand how Lauderdale is gonna protect the citizens getting in and out when all of this starts. And I'm not sure why we, uh, uh, I understand where the, um, Tamarack starts. It starts at the far north end, I guess, of sixty-fourth Avenue. The rest of that, I understand, is Lauderdale. So we need to take some ownership and responsibility to make sure that we look at alternate ways of getting us out of that, out of that area. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you so much. Sir?
I'm Winston Grace. I live at forty-nine forty Northwest sixty-fifth and Forest Lake. I've written to all of you about this issue, and I, I think what could be a solution to this is if Lauderdale and Tamarack could work with an alternative to housing along sixty-fourth Avenue. We have million-dollar homes on sixty-fourth Avenue over in Woodlands. If you ever, if you ever go down sixty-fourth, you see the most amazing site. It, it looks like a mansion in the Bahamas or something. There's this beautiful, I'm real sadation, but, uh, there's this amazing million-dollar house with its own golf course on the other side of sixty-fourth in the Woodlands. Tamarack will lose money if those prices of those luxury homes go down. They're gonna lose, uh, tax revenue. What could be an alternative to housing along sixty-fourth is something like, of course, like golf, but, but as it was in the past. Disc golf, which is like frisbee golf, which I wrote a letter to everybody, about, an email to everybody about that, which is getting very trendy right now. Sunrise, they have those kind of disc parks for frisbee part golf. But I think what would be great with, our whole community could work together is, is if there could be something like a Jewish community center along sixty-fourth Avenue, because that could be a substitute for the houses. Developer can make money off selling the property for a community center. And the people who live in Inverary, who go to the synagogues, could enjoy a community center on sixty-fourth. They could even walk to, um, from, uh, our, you know, Cypress Hollow and Cypress Creek and people in the Woodlands to a community center, and instead of a, an exit for roads, it could be a walkway for people to walk into a community center. The developer could win, Inver, um, Inverie, Lauderdale, uh, Forest Lake, Cypress Hollows could win. Tamarack can win. Everybody could win on a situation like that.
Thank you so much for your statement. Ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Demetria Rawls, R A W L S, forty-seven sixty-one Northwest sixty-fifth Avenue, Lauderdale, and I'm also on the board for the Forest Lake Estates. And I have to be totally honest with you. Many of us feel that the commission has not really advocated for us as it relates to Northwest sixty-fourth Avenue. So I was glad to see some things have actually taken place, but we really don't feel you all have really advocated for us in this change. And I know Commissioner Dunn, I've seen her at some meetings, Vice Mayor, one o'clock in the morning, we were at the City of Tamarack meetings. But I know I have email, and some of you haven't even responded to me in terms of my concerns. So I know we can't stop Tamarack from building. They can build a hundred stories up as much as they want to, but have we considered ways that we could compromise? Have we thought about maybe purchasing that strip of land that would make it belong to Lauderdale? And then we never have to have this issue again, because coming into the community, we have one way in, one way out. And we already have hundreds of homes now. If you add three hundred more homes to that, I don't know how we're gonna get out to that light in terms of dropping our kids off to school and going to work. Um, also, what concessions have been advocated for us, because we will have to endure the construction, um, delays. And then lastly, and I know Shalom mentioned it earlier, that we would love for you to retain special outside counsel, because we do share the attorney, the City of Lauderdale and the City of Tamarack. So what if we decide we wanna send a legal letter to the City of Tamarack? Do we have our attorney to respond and to read it? So if we have an outside counsel that has no conflict of interest, then we as homeowners would feel that someone is really advocating for us. We also want to know, and I know the person that presented said they likely wouldn't have access, but once they open that up, would everybody in the Woodlands be able to come through Northwest sixty-fourth Avenue? So now you're not only talking about an extra fifty homes, you're talking about tons of people who would not wanna go through Commercial, who, who would go through Northwest sixty-fourth Avenue. So again, we just want you to advocate for us. We want you to communicate. We want you to come to our homeowners' meetings and let us know exactly what is happening and be more of an advocate for us in that Northwest sixty-fourth Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm Bruce Tabachnik. I've been here in three 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 one nine since nineteen seventy-three. I served on the Housing Authority here under, uh, Mayor Kaplan. So I have seen this from where you see it, but make no mistake about it. We need you now. Okay? This is a major issue for us, not only financially, but health and safety-wise too. Can't box us in with promises that only fifty people are going to use that gate. You can't box our emergency services in with one entrance and one turn behind school buses, children, religious schools that come back and forth on that street. And I do not have a lot of confidence that this board will support us effectively. I have called the city already and asked them simply to pick up the trash, to pick up the trash that comes from the gas station, which is in Lauderdale. When they come out, you're in Tamarack, and that garbage is in front of the sign that says, "Welcome to Lauderdale." So until the garbage is cleared up, to give us any confidence that an issue as important as this will satisfy us leaves me less confident than I hoped I would be. So, thank you for your time, but we all, we also need your services on behalf of residents. Many of us who have been here fifty years have asked very little of this commission, but I wanna be absolutely clear, this is an ask tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you kindly, sir.
Shmuley and Juzier, fifty-four oh five Northwest sixty-seventh Avenue. Thank you very much for whatever you've done. Um, I have a bus company, so I, the bus that goes from sixty-fourth and makes a left on Commercial has to wait two or three lights. It's an extra ten, fifteen minutes for these kids to get to school. For like, it, as it is, the kids are, it takes an hour for them to get to school. If there's more traffic, it's really gonna have kids on the bus for an hour and a half, and it's just not, it's not doable. The other thing I wanna talk about is that I'm part of Atzala, and there's many, have been many, many times where it is six, seven, eight cars, and there's an emergency. Now, I can recall one, a mother was having a baby, the baby wasn't breathing. We needed to get through. I'm pushing cars into Commercial. Imagine if there's ten, fifteen more cars there, and it's just not safe. Personal experience. Thank you very much again, and I hope that you'll stop this, uh.
Thank you so much, sir.
Levi Fagelstock, four eight seven two Northwest sixty-sixth Avenue. Live in Forest Lakes as well, just to echo what everyone else said. And, uh, just also maybe to add is that we really need better options for in and out. I personally experienced many, many times people ju, even just using sixty-fourth as a U-turn. And they come off of, uh, off of Commercial, and right by the gas station is the U-turn lane, and I'm almost hit multiple times. Someone's just not looking, just doing a U-turn. That la, the whole sixty-fourth has become a situation where, A, the traffic needs, the traffic lights need to be cycling in a proper way for traffic to be able to flow, and their lineage, maybe having two or three extra added lanes somehow on sixty-fourth. That's our current situation right now is what we need. So imagine X amount of more houses, X amount of people more using, and as Shmuley just said, emergency vehicles, kids, and can't breathe, going to the, are we willing to take that responsibility and adding more and more cars and adding a tremendous emergency and a life-threatening situation when we don't have an option? Another option is maybe looking at on, along Inverie Boulevard, or as you continue down, I guess, I think it's forty-fourth, as you continue down sixty-fourth where it's shut off now. I don't know all the details, not well-educated in it, but to look at maybe having a residence-only ingress and outgress, so the residents have another option that they're not stuck on sixty-fourth.
All right.
And, um, thank you all for what you do. I really appreciate it. And, uh, I guess, good looking. Also, I want to add, even though we're just looking at sixty-fourth, you gotta look at Commercial. Commercial has become U-turn central. How many people, have we done a study of how many car accidents have been on, because of U-turns, because of traffic lights, the way they're set up on Commercial? And it's Tamarack, it's not, it's, it's Tamarack's place, and we're now gonna add all those cars, and with all that traffic sixty-fourth, people are gonna be skipping that sixty-fourth and making U-turns on both sides, and it's gonna cause unfortunately more traffic accidents and more U-turns you have. Just a thought. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. Mister Schender.
Quick, Ari Shender, fifty-
Quick, Ariya Schender, fifty-two seventeen Northwest Sixty-seventh Avenue. Uh, just to reiterate, uh, the commission was very good, very proactive to stop Forty-Fourth. Uh, Forty Fourth Avenue does not have access. I'd like you guys to be just as strong about Sixty Fourth for us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Okay, all right, so we're now close to the public. City manager, I would like you to just elaborate a bit more on this, and then I have some questions. And I do have some, uh, questions as well as it relates to the city attorney. Thank you.
Yes. Uh, again, the, uh, the reason for tonight's update is to provide, I guess you'd say, information as it relates to the legislation that's before the City of Tamarack. What they're proposing today is a variance for the change of home size, increase in home size. Now, understanding the position of our residents as it relates to the access along Sixty Fourth, uh, I heard some good ideas of some possible emergency exits that we can explore, and we will explore those uh, as it relates to the use of Sixty Four, Sixty Fourth Avenue. That is a roadway, and we have actually explored this, uh, that is split between the City of Lotter Hill and Tamarack. As you know, Sixty Fourth Avenue on the north end by Commercial is basically half and half, half Lotter Hill. So at the entrance of Sixty Fourth into the two communities is Lotter Hill, the exit of Sixty Fourth from the two communities is Tamarack. So we've had those conversations with the City of Tamarack as to not allowing access on our roadways and those type things. But the, the issue that we run into is that if we were to take that position, then we, meaning the residents along Sixty Fourth, would not be able to exit Lotter Hill because we would have to use Tamarack roads in order for that to take place. So understanding the, the issues and concerns, one of the things that we had conversations with Tamarack about is not allowing the entrance on the Sixty Fourth, and to continue to allow the entrances on Commercial. And we'll continue to have those conversations. We understand that the proposal that's before their P and Z board, uh, was denied at the P and Z level. As I understand, and it's being now presented to their full commission, we will have staff that continues uh, to be present at those meetings and express our objections to the use of that roadway. I'll schedule meetings personally with their city manager, again, to speak about the, the impact that the improvements that they're proposing has directly on our residents as it relates to Sixty Fourth. And then I have internal conversations, uh, with our staff, with our engineers, with our Public Works Department, to see if we can uh, rectify the issue of providing emergency exits along Sixty Fourth, both communities, uh, as it relates to Cypress Hollow and Forest Lake Estates. So again, I think we're dedicated as a commissioner and, and as staff to ensuring that the impact is minimal uh, on our residents. And even without any improvements, uh, the concerns that we hear as it relates to emergency exits, uh, we will have to address. So that is something internally that we've already started looking at, and we'll continue to look at it. And we'll continue to have conversations with the City of Tamarack as it relates to our dismay on the impact on our roads when they have options to actually allow their residents out on Commercial in Rock Island. So we'll continue those discussions and continue to provide information, uh, directly to the two HOAs.
All right, so you indicated that there is a possibility that they would not use Sixty Fourth, but just the Commercial.
No, that, that has been our position with them. We will have more conversations with them uh, to, to, to try to encourage them to utilize that. We have expressed our dissatisfaction with utilizing Sixty Fourth, uh, and for them to continue to use their existing entrance and exits along Commercial Boulevard. They have existing entrances and exits along Commercial right now that would allow them to confray even the new fifty units that they're speaking of, to utilize those without having to come out onto Sixty Fourth. Uh, again, we will have those conversations, uh, with them as it relates to that, because outside of only making it convenient for their existing residents which live on the north end of Sixty Fourth, there is no other reason to have them come out onto Sixty Fourth. What the, what they're proposing to do now is allow their new residents to bypass the homes of their existing residents to come in off of Sixty Fourth versus coming in off Commercial and drive through their neighborhoods, uh, to go to their new homes. So again, we will, I will personally meet with their city manager, again, and have these conversations, uh, with, with their planning department and our city engineers to express our position, again, uh, as it relates to, uh, being dissatisfied with the use of Sixty Fourth, uh, as a, as a entrance and exit for these homes that they're proposing to build.
Okay, I, that particular meeting, I would like to be a part of that conversation, so if you can add me to the agenda. Um, in addition to that, when is the next city commission meeting in Tamarack?
When is it, Daniel? Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Seven, seven, Wednesday at seven P M.
Okay, Wednesday at seven P M. Okay. So I'm sure that there would be representation that would be there. I would make myself available as well to be there.
Yes.
And, um, Zach, intergovernmental affairs?
Planning.
Planning, okay, got it. So we'll have planning there as well. All right. So tell me a little bit about, and I guess Daniel can perhaps answer this question. Did he run away from us? Okay. If you can share with me a little bit in terms of the timeline regarding the construction, what have they proposed?
I just know that they're in for building permits.
Mayor, I just want to correct the record. The meeting, uh, Wednesday is at nine-thirty.
Nine-thirty A M?
Yeah.
Okay. So let the record city clerk reflect, the meeting for Tamarack City Commission meeting is Wednesday at nine-thirty A M. Okay. Go ahead, Daniel.
So the timeline of events, I'm just aware of them in for building permits. Um, at this time, I don't know what their construct, overall construction schedule is. I think that that might be available. I just don't have that detail at this moment in time.
Well, it seems to me as if we've been dealing with this situation for quite some time, some years now. And the consensus of the community has been consistent in terms of not wanting Sixty Fourth Avenue to be utilized in that matter. Um, I know that we have, uh, contrary to what was, what was stated today, we definitely have been fighting. We have been fighting. But what the city manager mentioned is that the Sixty Fourth Avenue is utilized by both the City of Lotter Hill as well as Tamarack. And so therefore, they have rights to it as well. So in such a case, we just have to have discussions and advise them of where we stand, number one, and what the community is saying. Um, can we be a little bit more assertive, perhaps? And we will definitely make sure that we, as this now, um, legislation is, is being proposed, we will definitely be there. We will have conversations as well, as mentioned with the city manager, the ci- the, the mayor that ha- happens to live in that community as well. So we will have some conversations, and we will definitely reiterate our position on it. And hopefully come out where they will utilize Commercial and not Sixty Fourth Avenue. So we see and we understand the concerns, and, um, we, we don't necessarily live, I don't think any of us, okay, the city manager does actually. He lives in that neighborhood. So I'm sure that he echoes your concern as well. So we want to make sure that we have all the information, and thank you, Daniel, for, for giving us all the updates. And when we go to this meeting, we will definitely advise them of where we are, and we will come out of this hopefully with a positive, positive favorable response. Does that sound okay to you? You don't have confidence in us? Okay. Well, we're gonna fight. For those of us who, you know who I am, you know that I will definitely stand up for my community, so, and all of us feel the same. So we will definitely make sure that we go in and advise them. Now, to the gentleman as states about the garbage, we will have that taken care of right away, sir. I'm so sorry to hear that, and I drive that street quite frequently. Um, there are times I've seen things, and we've called for it to be picked up, but perhaps we've missed it this time. So thank you so much for reaching out to the city. And before you leave here, we'll give you some direct numbers as well, where you can perhaps reach out to myself or some of the commissioners when those situations occur, okay? Um, I see that Commissioner Dunn has some statements as well. You're welcome.
Thank you. Just some clarifying questions, um, Kenny. So you mentioned that you've been, you've had previous conversations about Commercial and, and Rock Island exits. Do you know what the city's objection is to maintaining that and not doing Sixty Fourth? What's, what's the, what's the objection?
So the conversations primarily were with the developer uh, as it related to the, uh, in- ingress and egress for their community. Again, I believe, uh, based on our conversations, that was one of the concessions they made with their existing property owners, uh, to be in favor of the development, because the, the through road, the entrance and exit right now is off Commercial, would require them, based on that map, to drive past the homes that are presently, uh, I guess to the north end, of the northwest end of that development. Whereby putting the entrance for the new, uh, homes off of Sixty Fourth, the new property owners would not have to drive through the existing community. They would be able to come around and then just enter, entry, entrance, uh, have an entrance directly into their community. So again, that was based on our conversations, and again, it was with the developer not so much. Uh, the city as it related to the use of that. Our conversations with the city had to do more so with the use of the roadway. So again, our issues had to do with the use of the roadway and the placement, and determining what portion of the roadway is ours versus theirs, and how that would impact our residents and just the use of it, and trying to come up with alternatives uh, for Sixty Fourth. And again, that's just keeping them on, on Commercial, but our conversations more so were with the, uh, property owners, other developers, as it related to that.
Okay, and so now the intent is to, um, have that conversation with the city?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Um, another clarifying question. I, I, I heard residents shared concerns about emergency access and what's gonna happen during the construction. So those are conversations that will...
So that's, that's ongoing. So we've, we've had conversations, uh, over at least the last year or so, relating to an emergency entrance and exit, uh, specifically from the, um, from, um, I forget where I live.
Forest.
Forest Lake Estates. That's where it is. From Forest Lake Estates, uh, and coming out onto Inverary. Some of the issues that, that we've identified, and we've had this conversation with the fire department as well as the Public Works Department, uh, is that in order for it to work, it would have to come out onto Inverary Boulevard. So again, we would have to, I guess, determine, uh, how feasible it is, because there is no curb cut. Uh, and then in order to impact the traffic flow onto Inverary Boulevard, and, and to ensure that, that it's for emergency only or emergency vehicles only, we'd have to stabilize or create roadways behind existing homes uh, in that community. I can tell you that when the road...
It should be very tedious.
Correct. So again, that, that is something that we're looking at. I think the idea that I heard about today, uh, coming out onto Commercial, uh, may be an opportunity for us to work with the, uh, the, the new, the, uh, new developer that's proposing the new development on Commercial. But the, the, the discussion as it relates to Sixty Four, um, as it relates to coming out onto Inverary, uh, was that initially when the, when the homes were being built, there were a temp- there was a temporary roadway that was utilized uh, by emergency services, by fire, and as a construction roadway, but it's never been utilized, uh, as, as a means of egress. So, uh, we'll continue to have those discussions. We'll, we'll follow up with, uh, with our Public Works Department, as well as we have to do a traffic study, which is actually underway currently as it relates to, uh, the N P O and what they're looking at, improvements along Inverary and Forty Fourth. So again, it will impact all of those things that we're currently looking at if we were to now introduce additional traffic onto Inverary Boulevard. So again, we'll, we'll provide that information to the N P O, and we'll do our own traffic study to see what the impacts would be. But we'll also explore the possibility of an emergency exit coming through Cypress Hollow to the north, uh, uh, through Auto Harbor and then onto Commercial Boulevard.
Yeah, I think it's critical for us to, um, come up with a strategy for emergencies, um, constructions. And then I heard one idea brought up that I think is worth exploring, um, the possibility of, of having resident-only access if we're not able to come up with an alternative solution, um, so that that way, that road is not open to every single body in the, in the community, right?
Sixty Fourth is what you're referring to.
Mm-hmm. And then my final thought is concerns were brought up about the conflict of interest around legal. So could you address that, please? I think I heard a suggestion about having independent counsel.
Okay, so before you say that, I know that Sixty Fourth, I had talked to the parents regarding that before, um, having it just to be for persons to come just in entryway, but I think your concern was that, how do you measure that, right? How do you, go ahead. You can please go to the mic.
Keep in mind, they're Amazon packages, they're Uber.
Right.
They're Uber Eats, they're Walmart deliveries. There's another seven, eight hundred cars a day minimum to the fifty homes, which is gonna use that as a shortcut to Pine Island when Commercial gets backed up. So it may just be fifty homes, which is not including the B section, which is also very close. So there's another couple thousand cars that was not brought up in any of these conversations.
Got it. Yep, yep, okay. Thank you so much with that. And, um, we'll turn this over to the city attorney as it relates to the legal question. I know that this has been brought up before, and, um, unfortunately, we thought he was just so good, we had to have him in the City of Lotter Hill. And so now we have this, perhaps, a challenge, but definitely not a problem. Because a problem, sometimes you can't find the solutions, but for sure, we have a situation that can be rectified. I know that with previous times when this was brought up, he had indicated that, um, he had a plan in place, and I'm sure that he will share this with you tonight, and he was definitely open to, um, of counsel or a different firm to be contracted to come in if necessary. So thank you so much, uh, city attorney, and I will turn this over to you.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. And in fact, uh, I have no objection if uh, city manager want to work with me and find outside counsel to assist the city in dealing with some legal issues that may, uh, uh, have some impacts, uh, to the City of Lotter Hill. But I want to be very candid, uh, because I've been very forthright with residents. I, uh, was invited to speak to, uh, H W Wilson Bowie and Mr. Walker, and, uh, Mr., uh, Schatz. I was, I've been a resource to the city in my position, and basically have given them information that, uh, they didn't have in their hand with respect to Sixty Fourth, uh, Avenue. Uh, and, and there was an ownership issue that was part of the project, uh, indicated that was researched by the developer. And, uh, the developer issued a memo showing that the street, half is owned by the City of Lotter Hill, half is owned by the City of Tamarack. Additionally, uh, having, uh, Mayor, uh, represent, uh, cities and having represent objecting residents, I can tell you, uh, the project at this point is in the hands of the developer. Uh, he has obtained all the necessary approvals from the City of Tamarack, State of Florida, and Abraud County. So at this point, uh, the developer is in the driver wheel. And the leverage, you know, looking at the history, I, I wasn't around, uh, some, some parts of this history, but I can tell you, even from the city of Tamarack standpoint, the city of Lotter Hill standpoint, leverage with a developer is generally right when they gone through the site plan review process, the comp plan process, which you have opportunity to appeal to the State of Florida or take them to court. You have opportunity to appeal to Circuit Court with respect to the site plan. When objectors or even city lose that opportunity, the developer knows that his, uh, approval start getting vested rights. So, uh, so his leverage right now is pretty strong. Uh, with respect to, uh, tomorrow night, tomorrow morning, uh, site plan variance, which he's seeking to make that, uh, the homes bigger, we have to, we have to re- it, it didn't pass, uh, obviously through the planning board. Uh, it's probably gonna have some opposition at the commission level. But nevertheless, even if it doesn't pass, the developers still have the approval that they received before. It doesn't change the original approval. So even if the commission rejects the site plan variance tomorrow, tomorrow morning, they will basically be in the same position they were before. So, uh, so my, uh, assistant, uh, with this project and, and concern raised by the City of Lotter Hill was, if there's a public safety issue, it impact both cities. If there's a access issue with respect to fire, safety, uh, ambulance, it impact both city. So what I have done is basically provide, and I have shown residents road improvements that they have, the developer has agreed to make with respect to Sixty Fourth Street. Uh, they are increasing the, the... With respect to sixty-fourth street, they are increasing the the number of lanes on sixty-fourth street going north. Okay? Okay, so so those 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 traffic mitigation issue in terms of sixty-fourth street, they have made some improvement. If the improvements may not be satisfactory to the residents of Lauderdale, but but yeah, okay.
Yep, okay, so order in the courts, order in the chamber, so we'll have the city attorney finish and then. Well, Commissioner Campbell does have something to say and then I can open it back up. I know that Mr. Katz and if Michelle, you would like to come up and say something and then we're going to close this out, okay? Thank you kindly, go ahead.
So so mayor, basically, I've been asked questions by residents, I've been asked question by elected officials. I've been able to facilitate information quickly back to them to give them the current standing of the project. And right now, as we stand, the project is is been approved by the city of Tamarack. There's a advance request that will go before the commission tomorrow and it does not deal with sixty-fourth street or any other entrance. It's basically dealing mainly with the developer seeking to increase the size of the home. So traffic issues or other issues are not part of the site plan, but I just want to give you the facts and that's why the facts are.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Campbell.
I I think you said I had a few words, but I have more than a few words. And twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, I took on this issue like my life depended on it. Forty-fourth Street threatening even to lie across the street to prevent anything from being done to forty-fourth Street. Similar to sixty-fourth Avenue. And I heard, I I see some new faces, but I also see some old warriors. That were fighting these issues. I attended all the meetings, including the county. Because there's a strong belief that I have and had. That you do not wait on things to happen and then you reversed it. Most recently, I have been around for a while and most recently, I looked at where the situation is now. And I said to myself, how did we allow it to get to a point where we are now trying to reverse correctly? What the the city manager, city attorney just mentioned. That we sat and allow them to advance. And where we are now, even what's part this discussion is about the size of the homes. Everything has been approved already. And it it is to me extremely sad that and it's it's not just the commission, but the residents. Some of us were sleeping because if each process that has been going on for the past four or five years. We were involved and trying to block those process. Now, everything is approved. And I suggest to what we can do at this point in time is that a couple of us need to meet. To determine the best we can get out of a bad situation. I was thinking most recently and prior to try to get the city to annex sixty-fourth Avenue. Because it's a weird situation where fifty percent of the road is Lauderdale and fifty percent of Tamarack. But after reviewing the document, it's not just a parcel of land, it's actually boundary of the city. Which cannot be just removed like that, it's it's it would take tremendous work. To even have the state or the county consider removing the boundary because it's a boundary line. So there are some of us who have been looking and studying the where we are now and trying to see how the hell we are going to fix this. Because we allow them to go to the county, to the state and got all the approval they need. So I suggest that as we move forward, we should meet in small groups and determine when we go to those meetings. Not just to make noise, but to present something that can work. Because the meeting that is coming up is to determine the size of the homes. So we could go there and speak about what we like and what we don't like, the meeting is not for that purpose. It is better for us to say, look at where they are today and to determine how we can. Get them to do something that benefits the city of Lauderdale. And overturning decisions that have been made by the state, by the county. It's because this is not about Tamarack. This is about a developer that appropriately went through the process and got all the permits. So Tamarack cannot even change some of these things that have have been approved already. The discussion prior should have been to prevent them from getting the approval in the first place. So I I I think I'm available and I guess the mayor said the same thing and others. For us to sit and look at where we are, people say change it to commercial. Yes, they, in the plan that we're looking at now, they're going to be exist on commercial. Also on the plan, there is a plan to expand the the sixty-four. Having a right turn lane and so on, we should look at that and determine if it makes any sense. Because probably that's where we can push the developer to to, there was a time I personally made proposal. For them to acquire more of that land on their side. So that the road can be extremely wide, making right turns, changes the traffic signal. So probably in reality, that's what we need to be focusing on now. But we cannot change the approvals from the state and from the county. That is, the developers have already secured those those approval. So I I'm available, we can meet, we can look at where we are now and we can determine what we need to fight. And not go to a meeting just to speak. I've been to the county and I've spoken and a lot of us have spoken and then the county say, well, guys, we understand that's that's you guys' problem. This meeting is to deal with this and that's what we're going to vote on. So let's be prepared not just to go to meetings and be angry. Although we have reasons to be angry, but to make sure that we meet with the developers, Tamarack and say, guys. This is not looking good, where where can we find a good spot? If we can't overturn it, the most we can do is to negotiate at this point to get the best out of it. The final thing is Lauderdale has parcels of land on commercial. We may have to determine where we can have alternative ways of getting out of those two communities. Because that's in our control, we don't have to ask Tamarack for permission to do so. So please, I'm available if we can sit and brainstorm. But from what we are now seeing, the because the proposal is way, way, way advanced.
Thank you, Commissioner, we do appreciate that. We yet we are optimistic, right? And so we will set up those meetings. City manager, you indicated you'll be setting up meetings with the city manager as well as the mayor. And whatever other disciplines that need to be in the room, I would like to be a part of that meeting. And indeed, we have to set up a meeting with the developer as well.
Yes.
Right, to have, I'm not sure if that could actually be, or if it's wise for us to be a public meeting. Because I know that more than one of my colleagues would probably like to be at that particular meeting, all right? So let's explore that, so we'll do that and we will work extremely hard to to try to change things and to turn things around, okay? We will do that, we are not going to, what I'm going to do, we are now closed out from the dais. But I know that Mr. Katz, as well as Michelle and Artie would like to say something and then we will close out. And the reason why is we can go on forever with this. So we want to make sure that we are going to attend the meeting on Wednesday, we're going to set up these meetings and then. We will come back in short order with another meeting so we can tell you about our findings and then have more discussions around this, okay? All right, Mr. Katz, and he's going to be so nice.
Very short as well, I'm going to say, based on the city attorney's last statement, sounded more that he's not really fighting on our behalf. And if we could please get someone to fight on our behalf.
Okay, I, okay, I do beg to differ. I think what he was doing was giving you information, but nevertheless, we do work for you. And so as a result of that, we will have discussions with the city attorney and perhaps contract someone to be able to handle this matter. But he was just giving information, but thank you. Mr. Katz is tough on everybody, even me, and I'm his friend, so I understand his position here, okay? Ms. Michelle.
Don't worry, Hannah already called with her statement, just to let you know. The the mic, please, yeah.
I've been a resident of Forest Lake now, November, November thirteenth will be thirty-two years. I'm, you know, I'm probably one of the oldest landowners there and I've watched everything progress, the traffic going down this road. Myself and Rockwell Shender, we went through this three years ago when we were in the president and the vice president of Forest Lake. We went to the meetings, we went to, we spoke to the city attorney at that time, we spoke to everybody and. We, you know, the we, first of all, I said, the easiest thing is let's widen the road, let's make it two lanes coming in and out. And stop sign came up, what stop sign came up? The light that's on the corner, I'm trying to think that would be your. No, no, it's 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 the south southeast corner, opposite the gas station, is the light there. That light doesn't belong, cannot be moved, we were told, it can never be moved, that that big light there. So that means for everything to work, to make a right-hand lane, center lane and the left-hand lane. Because we need that left-hand lane because it's, I was here, how many horrific accidents have happened when there wasn't that left-hand signal there? And one for the straight, now there's nothing to go to the right and I have been a person that sits in that spot and I see people going around me. To get to make that right-hand turn onto commercial if the, because the light happens to be sometimes long. We were told that those three lanes, that there's the two lanes going out and the one lane coming in, plus a little part of the. Where the gas station is that gives it a little wider turn there. That centerpiece that's there cannot be moved, the light cannot be moved. So the widening of this road is as far as what I was told and we were told at that time can cannot be done. So it's not an option. If we can't make that road wider for two lanes and then a third lane to make the left-hand turn onto commercial. Then this is what we're talking about is it can't be done because that those lights don't belong to Lauderdale, don't belong to Tamarack. They don't even belong to Broward, they belong to the state. And this is what we were told then, so we were, you know, we were in a bind, I said, easy, okay, let's make the. And I once, I went out there, I'm not sure it was who, and I said, this is my idea, move everything over, take away that medium strip. And we could make it into a a four-lane highway and and this sort. And they said, can't be done because of that light bulb. Now, if you guys have the magic words and get that light bulb can be moved, then we widen the street, make it to the four lanes, which would be very nice, honestly. For us to go in and out and then we could talk about the egress. Now, you're talking about the only the fifty homes that they're building would have access maybe to this going out there. I can't imagine the rest of the community of Woodlands saying, why can't I use that address? I mean, how, I I don't know, that's their project and that's what they would have to decide, how only the fifty homes, which we know fifty homes is a hundred cars nowadays. We're and school buses and anything else with Rabbi Katz was speaking about. So at this point, I don't know what the options are for sixty-fourth. We already gave back sixty-fourth Avenue, if you remember, I'm sorry, Mr. Campbell remembers. Is that sixty-fourth Avenue was originally supposed to go from Commercial to Embryary Boulevard. That was the original thing, that was going to be, and all of us, then they decided they're not going to make it a throughway, we stopped. We stopped at our entrance and they gave back all that land to the people that are living in on in Lauderdale. On that off of sixty-fourth, the land was given back to those people, they and those, so for you to go get it, you'd probably have to buy back the land from them. To make it even to go out to for Embryary Boulevard. And we don't want to have any more traffic on Embry, Embry Boulevard between, you know, the other Embry and forty-fourth in Rock Island is horrific in the morning. I mean, I'm sure everyone can attest that lives in that area. So I, when I see these things, you're talking about widening as far as what we were concerned and as far as we were told, it can't happen, so.
We'll look into that, yeah, we will look into that.
Mayor.
Yeah, and I would be lovely to speak to you or be on the little committee of Rabbi Katz. Because I've been there since the beginning of this whole transition of what you guys, what.
Yeah, we understand.
Okay, that's it.
So we'll look into that in terms of the lights with the state and I'm sure that while you were talking, I saw my colleague lean over to the city. City manager and I believe that's what they were looking, talking about, right? Looking into that on the state level, city manager, okay?
All right.
Okay, yep, all right, and city attorney?
I'm I'm going to give members of the commission, I believe I gave it to Commissioner Campbell, the site dimension for the new sixty-fourth Avenue. You could see what exactly is planned, so I will, before the end of the week, give members of the commission, you can share it to the public also.
Okay, okay, well, we are now finished with this discussion, thank you kindly for your engagement, your input, valuable. And we will take this back, we will schedule another meeting, you guys will be apprised of that where you can come in. And we will give you our findings and talk in terms of what needs to be done to move forward, okay? We are working on your behalf, yes, thank you, yes, thank you very much. See you tomorrow. Yeah.
What is that gentleman's name? The one with the the grass, what's his name? Hood, like hood, we in the hood?
Mr. Hood, Mr. Hood, thank you for coming as well, we appreciate it, sir. Mr. Hood, thank you for coming as well. We appreciate it, sir. And, um, we'll definitely have more conversation. I'll get your information from, from the vice mayor, okay? Yes, thank you so much. Yes, bye-bye. Yep. Okay, so I'll give you guys about sixty seconds to gather yourselves and we'll go back to item number five. Commissioner Campbell, remember your duty is not over, sir. You're saying, Mr. Shender?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah. It's gone. My phone's dead. What happened? Oh, yes, that's fine. Pardon? You can, but I don't know where to put it, so that's why I left it out there. Yeah, you can, you can put it next to you. Yeah, that's it. Thank you. Yeah. All right. Wonderful. Thirty more seconds to settle down and Mr. Hood? Yes, no worries. Okay, thank you so much. We are back to item number five, a discussion of the OIG closeout reports requested by Commissioner Dunn. Um, the city manager, who is not here. The city manager went over some information and our finance director added to that, and so it's now turned over to Commissioner Dunn. Thank you. But I think perhaps you would want the city manager to be here, right? Yeah. All right, so we'll just give him another minute or so. Is he the person leaning over, over there?
No.
No. Okay. We'll just give him another minute. It's a little bit warm. Because Commissioner Dunn is going to ask him questions. Yeah. Can we send him a text? Yeah, thank you so much. Uh, Commissioner Dunn?
Sure. Thank you, Kenny, for the memo and for, for the summary and for outlining the processes that's in place. I do have a couple of clarifying questions that I want to ask. Um, so, um, I know the OIG's report covered October twenty-twenty-one to February twenty-twenty-three. And, um, as you stated, it's really that one thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars were really pennies for the piece, but there was also about twenty thousand dollars of, um, purchasing of first aid supplies that was made without contracts or quotes, which is kind of in violation of the city's procurement process. So I'm just curious if you can kind of talk a little bit about why the internal controls um, that were missing. First, how come our auditor didn't pick that up? Because we do an auditing, go through a whole auditing process every year, so why didn't that pick it up? And then, um, and then secondly, um, why weren't they already in place before?
Right. So I'll, I'll start and then I'll, I'll Sean and, and Yalan to, to finish it. One, one of the issues is that, uh, we, we practice what we call decentralized purchasing. So what that means is that the burden of purchasing is shifted from finance to the departments. So the departments have more leeway to make purchases, they have the ability to get prices, they have the ability to select vendors, where under centralized purchasing, all of those activities take place in, in the finance department. Now, it's, it's more efficient to have it done decentralized, because the departments like it, because they can move faster, there's less red tape and those type of things. So in this instance, but the, the other side of that is that the persons that are at the department level are not as familiar with the contracts, are not as familiar uh, with the agreements that we have in place. In this situation, there was a piggyback contract that the person at the department level was not aware of all of the items that were part of the agreement, so they made purchases based on, I, I'm gonna say an assumption that this is the vendor that we use. So again, uh, and, and, and not, not suggesting that they, 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 under normal circumstance, would be, because in, in most cases, piggybacks usually would start at the department level, then it would come to the purchasing department and come to the commission for ultimately, ultimate approval.
I always pull them, because I don't like piggybacks.
And, and we're not, and, and, and that's one of the things that we will be doing a lot less of going forward, uh, are piggybacks. So, but that's, again, that was part of the issue, is that at some point, some years ago, we had centralized purchasing. Uh, but because there was a push from the department, uh, to be more efficient and, you know, uh, and to have things happen quicker, purchasing was decentralized, so it went out to the department level. Uh, so again, by doing that, then we lose control from a finance standpoint on having controls in place to ensure that the contracts are being reviewed and those type of things are taking place, because the purchasing thresholds allow departments to make purchases up to a certain amount without coming through the purchasing department.
What's that threshold?
It's, is it a thousand? A thousand dollars. So as long as they're making each item less than a thousand dollars, then they can make it at that department level without having to come through, meaning have, not having to obtain a purchase order. So as you'll see, one of the things we spoke of is, uh, as part of centralized purchasing, which we've gone back to, is that we're start, we've stopped using what we call blanket purchase orders also. Uh, where blanket purchase orders say that you can go to company A, B, and C, and you have the ability to buy items based on the agreement. Or if you haven't reviewed the agreement, or the person that's making the purchases aren't necessarily intimately, uh, familiar with that agreement, then they all have the ability to make purchases that aren't necessarily reflected in that contract. So Yalan, Sean, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, uh, as it relates to, um,
And could you speak specifically to that twenty thousand dollars worth of, um, first aid supply purchase? That the OIG report flagged?
Sure, Commissioner, forgive me, I'm losing my voice just a little bit, so I'll speak up as much as I can. So, um, in essence, what the OIG found was, as the manager says, because of these blanket purchase orders, what we would do at the beginning of the fiscal year is issue a purchase order to a user department for a particular vendor. And that allows a lot of flexibility and the ability to make purchases relatively quickly, but those purchases have to be tied to something. And in this particular case, there was a contract in place with this particular vendor.
For the first aid or for the uniform?
That, that is the issue at hand, is that we had a uniform contract, first aid was not included, but it's a vendor that they already had a purchase order with, and therefore, not intentionally, just those sort of purchases just started seeping in along the way. So, uh, to the point where we got to this level.
Okay, all right. So I think part of, you know, and I really appreciate that, um, Kenny, that technology, the, the, the expectation is that the new technology is gonna help to catch um, future duplications, right, of invoices, that was part of the issue. And that now we're not gonna have people not following the purchasing guidelines, which is why we had twenty thousand dollars worth of supplies purchased that was outside of the guidelines. So the technology you're saying is gonna catch some of those issues.
The technology and also the centralization of purchasing. So purchasing now has been shifted back from the department level to the finance department. So now, if, going forward, if they wanted to make those same purchases as related to this, to the, uh, first aid items, they would have to then submit a requisition to the purchasing department, who would then procure those on their behalf, who, at that level, because it's now centralized again, that they are familiar with what their contracts and their agreements are. And oftentimes, whether it's that vendor or another vendor, they'll have the responsibility to ensure uh, that, that the item is part of the contract, but the software also would help as it related to duplication of payments.
Which was a, a big issue, okay. So I know that OIG only looked at one vendor, right? Have you guys done your own, um, spot check to see, um, if there was like, uh, further other suppliers that may have been overpaid, other duplication of entries, or unverified invoices with other vendors or contracts?
I can't say at this point in time, I think the, the efforts of my purchasing department is mainly on trying to get this software implemented and trying to deal with the, the departments in regards to keeping business flowing. Uh, we haven't had a chance to go back to twenty-twenty-one to kind of review that type of stuff.
And, and if I will, I, I think the, the probability of that is limited. Because again, it's only certain types of vendors that we A have piggyback agreements with and B have what we call blanket purchase orders with. So the, the probability of having additional vendors, uh, is limited. And again, just in the world of what we do, uh, yes, we, we have looked at that, and that's why we've, we, I won't be able to quantify what that number is, but we know that that issue exists and it has existed over time, and that's why, from a finance perspective, that's something that you're against. Because from a finance perspective, you want to maintain control. So at the end of the day, if finance has control, then they can be sure that the contracts are in place and that those things are being followed. So by going forward, by saying that we will now, again, remove some of that responsibility from the departments and centralize it, uh, the, the probability is even less going forward. A, it was limited, because there were only a handful of vendors that we had blanket purchase orders with. And those were vendors that we did routine things, uniforms, we had a blanket PO. When we bought, uh, batteries, we would have a blanket PO, concrete, we would have a blanket PO. But again, those are only a handful of vendors that we actually, actually, uh, allowed that with. So, uh, is it something that we can go back and look at? Yes, it is something that we can go back and look at, and I think what was important, at least from the OIG's perspective, is that even though it was outside of the agreement, it wasn't something that was egregious, meaning that it was, it was, we violated our policy, but we didn't, I guess you would say violate.
I can't, nobody was, and, and this is, this, for me, this goes back to the same thing that I was saying about why we should audit every single grant, right? Because then we can look at opportunities to improve the process, right? It's a process improvement opportunity. Um, so why wasn't it caught in our audit?
Uh, audits, audits are not absolute. So for example, what we're proposing to do now, which is a forensic audit, they actually look at every item, every invoice, every check. And art, forensic audits are not completed on an annual basis by municipalities. So they, so they do it by sample. So what, what, through a normal audit process, they pull samples. So we provided a list of all of our vendors and they select certain vendors. We provide a list of all of our invoices, they select certain invoices. We provide a list of all of our checks and they select certain checks. And then they go through. So by, by going through this process, those items were not identified based on their, their normal audit procedures. Uh, it was in this situation, because again, this was a known offender, uh, uh, that was identified by a whistleblower that says, we know for a fact that this company is doing A, B, and C, so when
They knew where to look.
They knew exactly the vendor to look at, and they knew that it had been done throughout the country. I can tell you that, that based on, on our findings, that it must be a lot more egregious, I'll say, in other places, because if they only found X amount of, of overbilling, they would not go through an entire investigation, because nineteen hundred is considered immaterial. When you're looking at a two-hundred-million-dollar budget, they're saying nineteen hundred dollars is immaterial. So in that situation, they would not even investigate it. So it appears that there have been much larger violations outside of, of just even this area. Uh, so again, that's why a, a normal audit wouldn't catch it, because they're not looking at every invoice for every check, uh, for every item. That's what a forensic audit does. Normal, uh, financial statement auditing is what we go through on an annual basis. They do that via samples.
And so when will the technology be in place?
It is in place.
It is in place.
Yes, April twenty-twenty-five, so that's already been placed in place.
Okay, and would you, could you give us an update, like in another quarter?
Yes.
As to how it's, yeah, because I, yeah.
So, so the, uh, the items that we spoke of have all been implemented. So the centralization has taken place. Yalan is the person that I was speaking of, uh, that is now overseeing purchasing, so that has, that transaction, transaction has taken place. The software was implemented in April twenty-twenty-five. The additional training for staff has already been implemented as well. So all of these things have already been implemented. Uh, the, uh, three of the five were implemented even before the report was issued. So three of the five were things that we were uh, planning to do even before we got to the point of receiving the, uh, OIG's report.
All right, yeah, in another quarter, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I do appreciate it. And we are now on to item number six, which is a presentation to review the draft for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six supplementary strategic plan. And that has requested by the city manager.
So as, as, uh, the new team, uh, comes to the front, uh, again, this is exciting times for us. Again, uh, we are proposing or presenting a supplemental strategic plan to the commission. Uh, over the last several months, there has been presentations by Don, Jen, and Coley as related to our strategic plan. Uh, since, uh, that point in taking the input from our residents, I'm sorry, our commission, we are proposing a, what we call a strategic, a supplemental strategic plan. Before you, you have Ms. Nadia Chin, uh, who is the head of this, uh, new task force, this new division that we have, uh, that works, uh, with the strategic plan, Zach Davis Walker and Courtney Wright. Uh, also work with her, as well as the department directors on ensuring or implementing this, uh, strategic plan. Understanding the importance of the strategic plan and strategic priorities, priorities of this commission, we found, we found that it uh, only made sense that we dedicated, uh, real resources to ensuring that we have a plan uh, that, that's been viewed and accepted by our commission and our public, uh, and is being implemented at the department level. As you know, there was a strategic plan process that was undertaken several years ago. There was a strategic plan, uh, that was, uh, issued, uh, back in twenty-twenty-four, but not necessarily implemented. So, uh, based on some of the conversations that the commission has had with Don, Jen, and Coley and staff, we're here today for a presentation of our supplemental strategic plan. Again, it's open. What we're looking for is feedback uh, from the commission. Uh, once we have these, uh, specific feedback, then there would be an adoption of this plan at some point uh, in the future. I will turn it over to Ms. Nadia.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Nadia Chin, Deputy City Clerk and Division Director of Strategic Planning and Performance. And I'm here today to respectfully request consideration for acceptance of the supplemental strategic plan for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. Before I get started, I just want to let you know that you have in front of you a draft of the supplemental plan. And I also created for you a commission quick reference guide to use as a tool while I go through this presentation. Next slide.
So I'm, I'm sorry, um, Nadia, so this is what it would look like?
Right now, yes, as a draft.
Okay.
So this is, again, this is only the supplemental plan. The strategic plan, this is the supplemental strategic plan. Uh, again, the strategic plan, and, and Nadia will walk us through the process and how the two tie together as we go through.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm excited to present this plan to you, but before we go any further, I do want to clarify that this plan is not a replacement of the twenty-twenty-four strategic plan. It builds on it. When I became chair of the Strategic Planning Committee, I took a close look at how this plan was being carried out, what was working well, and where we could perform better. Through that review, two natural gaps were identified, timing and performance. Instead of waiting, we took a proactive approach by creating a supplemental plan, our mid-cycle checkpoint that allows us to reassess, realign, and correct those issues now. The timing gap came from the schedule itself. The twenty-twenty-four plan runs through twenty-twenty-nine, but our next community survey isn't scheduled until twenty-twenty-six. That means we'd be halfway through the plan before seeing any new data to guide our decisions. The performance gap was about consistency. While departments were doing great work, we didn't have a clear way to show that work was improving everyday life for residents. So inside this plan is a three-phase implementation approach to close those gaps and keep the twenty-twenty-four plan active and measurable through clear key performance indicators, also known as KPIs, and consistent performance tracking. The supplemental plan serves as an operational bridge, keeping momentum strong and alignment clear as we move toward our next strategic plan in fiscal year twenty-twenty-seven. Next slide. Now that we've talked about the purpose of the supplemental plan, let's take a look at how our commission priorities have evolved and what that means. The role of our commission priorities is to guide every goal, project, and performance measure across the city. They reflect what our commission has chosen to focus on, the areas that make the most visible difference in the daily lives of residents. So please reference this slide as I walk through how the priorities have evolved. When the twenty-twenty-four strategic plan was adopted, it included six commission priorities. But as we began developing the supplemental plan, we noticed overlap across several documents in the city, including the city manager's annual financial report and the discussions that we had at the July Commission Workshop. In that workshop, the commission reaffirmed four core focus areas moving forward. And now those four have, those four focus areas have been refined and not changed. And now those four have those four focus areas have been refined and not changed. We aligned the language, we removed duplication, we updated terminology so it reflects modern regional standards for how cities communicate their strategies to make it easier for the public to follow. A few quick examples from this slide. Public safety previously appeared under different names like exceptional public safety and strengthening public safety. It's now been streamlined to one clear priority, public safety. Value for tax dollar has been refined to fiscal transparency and accountability and basising open reporting and clear budgeting. From the last workshop, I also heard interest in education and public health. Rather than adding new priorities, we've integrated those topics into the existing four priority goals to stay consistent and focused. So based on the updated goals, education connects with the priority economic opportunity and sustainability. And public health aligns with beautification and public spaces because the goal includes health and quality of life. With that refinement complete, let me introduce you to our four updated priorities and the goals that support them. Next slide. Moving forward, these four priorities will guide the city. Public safety, beautification and public spaces, economic opportunity and sustainability and fiscal transparency and accountability. Each priority includes clear goals that connect strategy to measurable results. It's best practice to keep priorities stable so we can track progress consistently over time. Steady priorities let us measure K P I's reliably reliably aligned budgets and reporting and show clear year-over-year trends in the next survey cycle so we focus on execution and not resetting targets. If new focus areas come up, we'll address them by updating the goals within those four priorities. And these four these four priorities will serve as a foundation guiding the next planning cycle. Next slide. To close the performance gap, the Division of Strategic Planning and Performance was created. The International City County Management Association, also known as I C M A, says a strategic plan is only as strong as the system that carries it out. And that's exactly what this governance structure does. It provides a system to make sure our plan doesn't just sit on paper, but turns into real results residents can see. This structure connects three key groups. The first one is our Performance Management Office. I oversee the city's strategic planning process through the P M O, which serves as a city's central hub for data tracking, budget alignment and performance tracking. Excuse me, performance reporting. Within that framework, I'm supported by my team, Zach Davis Walker and Ms. Courtney Wright. And together, we ensure progress is measurable and aligned with city priorities. The second group is our Strategic Steering Committee. It's a small internal team with operational expertise that meets monthly to drive implementation, monitor progress and resolve challenges quickly, ensuring projects stay on track and results are delivered effectively. And then lastly, we have our Strategic Planning Committee comprised of department heads who meet quarterly to coordinate citywide initiatives, review performance data and ensure that projects remain aligned with commission priorities and cross-departmental goals. Together, these teams form the engine of accountability, creating a clear line from planning to results. Next slide. Now that we've covered this structure, here's how it all comes together. The supplemental plan follows a three-phase implementation approach to close the timing and performance gaps. Phase one is our quick wins and supplemental initiatives, turning strategy into action. Phase two is our commission input and community engagement, capturing insight to shape what's next. And phase three, a refreshed fiscal year twenty twenty seven strategic plan, bringing it all together into our next five-year cycle. Together, these phases keep progress active, measurable and aligned. Next slide. Phase one is where the plan turns into action through our quick wins and supplemental initiatives. Quick wins are the highlight of the supplemental plan. A unique innovative approach I developed to show visible results within ninety days. Their high-impact, high-visibility action actions residents can see and feel in their neighborhoods. A few examples of that includes activating cruise light patrols, pressure cleaning in priority parks, hosting quarterly job fairs and launching the where your tax dollar, where your tax dollar goes infographic. And the full list through is available through the Performance Management Office where each project will be tracked and updated as it moves forward. But even though some of these actions are operational, what makes them quick wins is their impact, their visibility and timing. So when we launch on November first, residents will see crews in parks, officers on patrol and departments moving with intention, building trust and momentum within our community. And that momentum continues through our supplemental initiatives, which focuses on longer-term impacts like expanding the city's social media strategy to highlight ongoing projects and activating our neat team to keep neighborhoods clean, safe and inviting. And together, these efforts keep progress visible and meaningful, showing that we're not waiting for change, we're creating it. Next slide. Phase two focuses on listening and engagement, bringing both our commission and our community into the process. We'll begin with one-on-one interviews with each commissioner to identify any additional focus areas within our existing priorities that can help guide the next phase of planning. From there, we'll launch a twenty twenty six community survey alongside our new Learn and Engage Open House. It will be a fun, interactive event where residents can explore what departments are working on, meet staff and share feedback directly. And to make participation easy and inclusive across generations, we're expanding accessibility through multiple survey options, including mail surveys and digital access through online links, Q R codes and social media as well as our city platforms. This approach allows us to meet residents where they are, whether that's online, on their phones or through traditional outreach, ensuring everyone has an opportunity to be heard. This blended outreach model keeps engagement innovative, inclusive and convenient, helping us reach a broader and more representative audience in shaping our next strategic plan. And under the fiscal transparency and accountability priority, we're introducing a public performance dashboard, a live online tool that allows anyone to explore priorities, track quick wins and supplemental initiatives, view performance metrics and see survey results in one transparent space. This makes transparency simple. Residents, commissioners and the staff can see measurable results right on the city's website. Next page, uh, next slide. Phase three brings everything together. Commission input, community feedback and new performance data from the twenty twenty six community survey into the refreshed fiscal year twenty twenty two twenty twenty seven strategic plan. When we say refresh, we mean renewed. The supplemental plan was intentionally designed as a one-year bridge, carrying us through fiscal year twenty twenty six and laying the foundation for a new five-year plan. This next plan starts a fresh start, developed in-house, informed by updated data and aligned with the commission's long-term vision for twenty twenty seven to twenty thirty-two. It closes the gaps we identified, it strengthens accountability and ensures a measurable progress that the public can see clearly. And because it's being built internally, we can design it around our own systems and experience, giving Lauderdale the ability to adapt quickly, refine in real time and continuously improve. Once accepted, the twenty twenty four strategic plan will formally close out and the refreshed fiscal year twenty twenty seven plan will launch a new five-year cycle grounded in leadership priorities, current data and our annual survey results. It will function as a living document, updated each year as new performance data and departmental results come in, keeping the plan active, relevant and transparent. This is our opportunity to shape Lauderdale's next chapter, data-driven, results-focused and built by us. Next slide. So this slide shows what's continuing from the twenty twenty four strategic plan and what's being added or enhanced through the supplemental plan. So what's staying the same is our vision, our mission and guiding principles, the commission priorities, which are now refined for clarity but with the same intent, our key performance indicators, also known as our K P I's, from the twenty twenty four plan and the twenty twenty two survey, which will continue continuing until new data is collected in twenty twenty six. And what's new in the supplemental plan is a three-phase implementation timeline with clear milestones, clear goals and refined priorities to strengthen alignment and focus, the quick wins and supplemental initiatives approach, our new governance framework to strengthen accountability, our public performance dashboard and reporting system to make progress visible, and a new annual site, a new annual survey and engagement model using both digital and in-person tools and building the next strategic plan fully in-house using city data and expertise. Next slide. This timeline shows the full journey from acceptance of the supplemental plan all the way through this time next year when we'll adopt the refreshed fiscal year twenty twenty seven strategic plan. And I'll just let this slide speak for itself. The supplemental strategic plan turns vision into action, keeping Lauderdale growing and moving forward together. And it's our commitment to progress, accountability and a better everyday experience for residents. Next slide. And with that, I respectfully request your consideration to accept the city of Lauderdale supplemental strategic plan for fiscal year twenty twenty six. And that concludes my presentation.
Yeah. We can see that you've worked extremely hard on this, your team, and thank you so much. This was a very good presentation. I'm a little bit concerned about having a supplementary plan though. So I wanted to find out why are we going in that route versus just being able to revise the strategic plan that we already have and having one document to work with?
Want me to start?
Go ahead.
Okay, so a-again, I think part of the rationale behind doing the supplemental plan is based on some of the conversation that we had previously on taking a look at the strategic goals, the broadness of those strategic goals and wanting to try to refine some of those goals into more, uh, I guess you'll say defined and quantifiable measures. So we're not disposing of that plan. We've just taken that plan and refined it to a matter, what we call now a supplemental plan, meaning that that plan was, we're using the data from that plan. So there was the survey that was done in twenty twenty two, which is the data for the plan. I think the strategic goals that were set out, there were what, a hundred plus, I believe it was? It was it was close to a hundred plus, um, um, I guess you'll say strategic priorities. So we're just modifying that information and making it more concise. I think that was part of Don's presentation, uh, last month when he made the presentation on the broadness and the importance of having concise data and measures so that we know exactly as we move forward, what it is that we're trying to actually achieve.
So when are we going to have this the strategic plan, that particular document? When is that document going to be finalized?
Next October.
So while we're working on that document, we're utilizing this document for what you would consider to be short wins?
That's that's, oh, go ahead.
Or quick wins?
So quick wins are one element. Uh, the rest are the ongoing initiatives that were pulled from that twenty twenty four plan. So essentially to piggyback off of the city manager's point, um, and this as expressed by Don, our adopted plan from twenty twenty four contained a very broad range of different goals and and, you know, desired outcomes. And the part, the exercise we've done here is try to narrow down these goals, these outcomes, these metrics into actionable, measurable goals. Because as you know, when you're governing a city, you have to have some semblance of, you know, a a defined priority list. That way you can move the.
I understand. So is this going to be more of an internal document?
No, ma'am. So the intent is is for this to act as a bridge. So you have those quick wins and you also have that element of those ongoing initiatives, which were pulled from the twenty twenty two data and that twenty twenty four plan. So the reason why this is drafted in short form is because we know that once we do the updated survey, which will provide us with updated data and obviously all the information that you provide us, that's going to help inform that survey. So now, not only do you have updated data, you also have input from what is essentially a newer commission.
Okay, so once that the main strategic plan is finalized, then we would no longer be utilizing a supplementary plan.
That is correct.
This is just to be able to guide us until then, right? While you work on.
And if we take a quick look at starting at page, page ten of the supplemental plan, it kind of speaks to what Nadia and Zach were speaking of. And again, these are the K P I's and they're tied to the various priorities that have been set forth. So you'll see, for example, public safety and then there are four defined and specific measures as it relates to public safety. Number one, percentage of residents who feel safe and very safe marking at night, that's measurable. We have that information already based on the survey that was completed in twenty twenty two, I'm sorry, twenty twenty two. But we'll also, when we do the survey in twenty twenty six, we'll ask those similar questions and we'll be able to gauge have we've increased or decreased.
And have a benchmark.
And have a benchmark.
Specific measures, yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
So you'll see that based on the four priorities. Uh, and again, that's in in this information, the reason we say supplemental is because we're not disposing of or discarding the twenty twenty two data in the twenty twenty four plan. We're just trying to make it more precise and then have more identifiable identifiable priorities as well as, uh, priorities and that K P I's until we can get to that new new strategic plan, which a goal is to have it next fiscal year.
Okay.
This time next fiscal year, October twenty twenty six.
October twenty twenty six, okay. So we see here, public safety, beautification, economic opportunities, fiscal transparency. I would love for you to add health and wellness to that as well because that's something is that we've talked about.
In regards to the priorities?
Yeah.
Okay, so earlier in this slide, I mentioned that we're going to move forward with these four priorities, but we'll update the goals. So in the goals, it mentions health, um, let's say, one of them mentions, where would that, what would that go under though? Let me tell you. Okay, so you said you wanted to see education?
No, health and wellness.
Health and wellness, okay. That one is now tied into beautification and public spaces. So the goal of it is to elevate the look, feel and functionality of Lauderdale's streets, parks and public spaces through consistent maintenance, lighting and community-driven beautification that promotes pride, health and quality of life. Now, if you want to see more enhancements to public health, we can.
Yeah.
Elevate the goal to express it more.
Right.
But we want to stay focused with the four priorities because we want to maintain consistency with our residents and with our documents.
Okay, so one of the things that we had said the last time that Don presented is that we wanted to put health and wellness in this because the health component is not just geared towards the aesthetics of how the parks look and all of that, but it's really programs that are going to help our community to live a healthier life.
So you're saying you want another priority?
Yes.
So you want a total of five or maybe even more?
Not not more, but five.
Okay.
Yeah.
So during our commission interviews, when we do the one-on-one interviews with our P M O team, we'll ask you, what focus areas do you want to look at that's going to drive us for the next plan? And during that interview.
And if I may, and and I think to your point, Mayor, and and it's something we can go back and look at if that was part of the initial survey. The information that we're reflecting was all part of the initial survey. So if those questions were not asked initially, then from a measurable standpoint, we won't have a basis in order to incorporate it in.
But I'm sure that you gathered information from the other workshops and.
Well, all of this data is based on the survey data. So everything is based on survey data that was taken in twenty twenty two. So I think what we're saying is that if that's a priority, we can create a fifth priority and then as we move forward into twenty twenty six and we start asking those survey questions, we'll ensure that that information is there. I won't say that it is not, but the basis for what we're presenting is based on the survey data for twenty twenty two.
Sure.
So everything that we have here, we can go back and actually see based on that data, what the benchmark is, what was considered favorable, unfavorable, uh, and all of that information.
And perhaps, and perhaps that was not a question that was proposed. But I am telling you that right now in the season that we're in, that is big. Okay, so it's it's imperative that we add this to it.
So when we do the interviews early of twenty twenty six and we sit down with you and we find out what you want as your focus area, one of it being.
No, I think the focus area should be here now.
But this is supplemental plan, so.
I think, Mayor, we'll go back and verify if it's there. If it is there, then yes.
We will add it. What I'm saying is that it has to be there.
But Mayor, I I think.
This is not a final document, so you. Okay, wait, wait, wait. You're here with to present to us so that we can give you recommendations, correct?
To a point, because the the point of this is for it to be statistically sound. If we don't have statistics, then it it de- it invalidates this entire document. So we have to have statistics in order for it to for us to have a valid document. Trust me, we've had this internal debate with Don, Jen, Coley and and others as relates to.
But I I'm letting you know, as a representative, not just of this board, but of the community, I know what the needs of the community are. And I am telling you that this document needs to reflect health and wellness. So we go back to, uh, the.
So if we go back to the slide number three, Andre? The one before this. So from the 2024 strategic plan, the only thing in there that was about, it said healthy people and places as the goal.
So we'll go back and, and pull the statistics for that.
So we can pull it back out and then create it as its own priority?
Yes, I think that's important.
Okay.
Okay?
We'll do that.
And we actually indicated that the last time Don presented, that was something that was needed. And, and these sort of things, anyway, should be fluid, right? Until you have a final document, because things change. I mean, look at what's happening now on the federal level. It's going to affect us in so many different ways, right? So we have to always make sure that our, our hands are on the pulse and we know what's going on in our community and what the needs are. And I think that is very, very important. So, but overall, this is a very good document. I think it's, it's thorough, descriptive. I think that Nadia's presentation was excellent to the 10th power.
Thank you.
And I can see that a lot of work has been put into this, for sure. It's detailed and can have a little bit more specifics, but even in terms of the, the pictures, other than the fact that I think that the commission should be at the front page, along with the city manager. Yeah. So other than that, I think the pictures actually reflect what you're speaking to. And I think we can work with this, but definitely add health and wellness to this because that's an important thing. And let me see if there's anything else.
So if we add health and wellness, then we're going to have to update our beautification and public spaces goal?
Yes, that's fine.
Yeah, just modify it a little bit. Yeah. You just take out that health component that you have. Although it, it fits in, but the health that I'm speaking of is a little bit more, it's medical. Yeah, it's medical health. And let's see. And I like the quick wins, too. I love to be able to see things that are, that are actually working. So then you can go back, if it's not working, and then modify that, right? So then the quick wins will be able to guide you through that process. Um, let's see if there's anything else. And I think you captured what the community is saying, because the fiscal responsibility will have to, well, city manager deal with our taxes and all of that, which we've been working on the beautification, the public safety, and economic development. Yep. Very good. Well done.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Don.
Exceptional job, you guys. I could tell that you put a lot of work, a lot of thought in it. I love the specifics, having the KPIs. I love the idea of having a dashboard. I think transparency for both in-house and for the community is really important. I do, however, agree with the mayor about the importance of having health and wellness. Kenny, I hear your concern about wanting to make sure that you have anchor data to move it on. May I make a suggestion? So there's a thing called the Social Vulnerability Index that you can use to, as a baseline. So you could look at the Social Vulnerability Index, you could look at social determinants of health, you can look at, in addition to that, certain indicators like the uninsured rate, like the Medicaid rate, like the Medicare rate. So there are specific data points that you can use to measure the health and well-being of the community that is used by public health agencies on a regular basis. You can even just look at Healthy People 2020 or 2030 goals now, and they have those indicators specifically for communities. And that data exists that you can benchmark through the Health Department and other sources. And if you want a place to start with the benchmarking, look at the Community Needs Assessment. That's still on the, the city's website, and it'll show you where we were in 2020 when that document was done. And, and then you can have that as a benchmark. Okay? But I do agree that we absolutely should keep health and wellness.
Thank you for the feedback. We'll definitely take it into consideration and add that additional priority.
Fantastic. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We like working with you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
First, congratulations on your new position.
Thank you.
And job well done. This is, this is what I envisioned for the City of Lauderdale.
Awesome.
To start looking like and doing the things we need to do.
Innovative.
Um, very similar to in the military, you're former.
Yes.
Veteran. We used to call them mission, mission essential task lists. And we used to tie those missions or the, or the task lists to a crosswalk. And I also understood that you're going to look at the employees and staffing and tie the staffing to.
Strategic planning.
What we're doing.
Yes.
And so tying everything together and then codifying it with the, you know, statistics is really where we need to be going. And I, I, I like, I like what I'm saying, so great.
I'm glad you're happy with it.
Yes, fantastic. Okay. Do, would you like to close it out, City Manager?
Sure. Again, thanks for the feedback. We'll make the changes to the existing plan and bring it back before the commission for consideration at the November meeting.
Okay.
I think we should be able to have it done by then. Again, thank you to Nadia and her team, Zach and Courtney, as well as all of the department directors. I think they will all agree that Nadia is a real taskmaster. And she has been keeping all of them on our toes. Yes. So we've been having homework to do this. But again, I think this is in line with the priority of the commission, the priorities are. And, and we take this very seriously. We, we do, we have heard and we are listening to what the commission is saying as to our path forward. So again, this is something that's measurable, that we can look at, that not only measures the work that we're doing, but also the feelings of our residents. And I think it's important to have both of those. So thank you again for the feedback. And we'll make the adjustments and have it before the commission for consideration in November.
Fantastic. And so Nadia has a new position. What is her title?
Nadia, what's your new title?
Division Director of Strategic Planning and Performance, as well as Deputy City Clerk. It's a dual role.
Okay, fantastic.
Thank you.
We love it. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Great choice, City Manager.
Kenny, could we please get a copy of the documents, please? What you handed out, I'd like to get electronic copies, please. Thank you. And the presentation?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, you didn't get one?
No, I'd like to get an electronic.
Oh, electronically, got it.
Yeah. The PowerPoint and the actual document.
Okay, fantastic.
Thank you.
All right. Well, it seems as if we have come to the close of our commission workshop. It has been very spirited. And thank you all for your engagement. Thank you to all of our staff members who kept awake and engaged as well. And thank you to Mr. Shender for staying the whole time. All right. Wonderful. And we are adjourned.